In a world where loyal companions await, one place stands as their beacon of hope. The Pet Resource Center of Hillsborough County, where you can adopt your very own superhero. Adopt a dog, find your sidekick, and unlock the power of unconditional love. Suit up, show up, and adopt today. For more information, visit hcfl.gov/pets.
Welcome to a meeting of your planning commission, the official local planning agency for the cities of Tampa, Temple Terrace, Plant City, and unincorporated Hillsborough County. The Planning Commission provides innovative leadership and long-range vision that contributes to the creation of a thriving prosperous community that offers opportunity, fairness, and choice in how we live, move, learn, work, and play. For more information about the Planning Commission, please call 813-272-5940. Follow us on social media or visit our website at planhillsborough.org.
Welcome everyone to the October 13th, 2025 public hearing of the Planning Commission on Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Amendments. We thank you for attending this meeting, your comments and participation are encouraged. For those attending in person and wishing to speak on any agenda item, please sign the register at the rear of the room and turn off any devices that may be a distraction. To minimize feedback in the audio, all online participants in the meeting will be muted until it is their opportunity to speak. Planning commissioners should unmute themselves to indicate that they would like to speak. Please be sure to state your name at the beginning of your remarks for the benefit of the clerk. There will be an opportunity for members of the public to provide comments. When your name is called, you will be unmuted when it is your turn to speak. Please wait until the chair calls on you to begin speaking, state your name at the beginning of your comments, and adhere to the time limits. If anyone has difficulties or is watching via HTV and would like to provide comments to be included in the record for the local government hearing, please email them to For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced, staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit, the applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the Planning Commission when recognized by the chairman. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person, the applicant will be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal or response, planning commissioners will then ask questions, public comment will be closed, then upon a motion, a second, and discussion, a vote will be taken. To all participants, please note that tonight's hearing concerns proposed changes to the comprehensive plan. Presentations should not include matters related to zoning applications and site plans that are not before the commission. Zoning conditions are not relevant to plan amendments and may not be considered by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission's purview in making a recommendation is limited to consistency or inconsistency with the comprehensive plan. And with that introduction, I'd like to please ask the clerk to go ahead and call roll.
Good evening, commissioners. Bowden?
Here.
Cardenas?
Here.
Kona?
Here.
Jefferson?
Here.
Crass? Coogler?
Yeah.
Linkus?
Here.
Lauk?
Here.
Seeben? Barry? Orton?
Here.
Joseph?
Here.
Thank you, you have a call.
Thank you. All right, our first agenda item is 2A, HCCPA 25-16, Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment, Surface Water Resource Protection Areas and Wellhead Resource Protection Areas Map Updates. And the presenter is Diego Guerra.
Good evening, afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, Diego Guerra, Planning Commission staff. This item is the Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan Amendment 25-16, Surface Water Resource Protection Areas and Wellhead Resource Protection Areas Map Update. This is a publicly initiated plan amendment, and although it's a map amendment to the Flu map series, it is processed as a text amendment. The applicant seeks to update the Surface Water Resource Protection Area map, which includes the Hillsborough River, Alalfia River tributaries to both, and the Tampa Bypass Canal. Additionally, as for the Wellhead Resource Protection Areas map, the applicant proposes to remove the Zone 1 areas, redefine the Zone 2 areas to consist of hydrologically modeled cones of contribution, in addition to a 500-foot buffer to provide an extra level of protection. So a little bit of background to both. The map depicted on your screen is the proposed map to be strike or stricken from the current future land use map series. The wellhead resource protection areas were established in 1992 with additional safeguards adopted by the county in 2004 utilizing the best sciences and technology available at that time. The Zone 1 was established to protect the potential future supplies while Zone 2 was established to protect the existing resources, and again, those two were adopted in 2004. Criteria for wells to be included in the wellhead resource protection areas include public wells that produce 100,000 gallons per day or more, and they must be directly connected to the potable water system, the public potable water system. For the proposed, the applicant proposes, I'm sorry, the applicant proposes to redefine the Zone 2 delineated areas to provide an additional 500-foot buffer around the cones of contribution based on the current science and technology. So on the currently adopted map, you see there's green squares around the current cones of contribution. Those are proposed to be, again, delineated to only include an additional 500-foot buffer. The applicant also proposes to eliminate the Zone 1 of the wellhead resource protection area, which is those red shaded areas along the northern seam of the county and on the east-central seam of the county, as it has not been utilized with the intent or purpose of its creation since its adoption in 2004. With the recent, and then, little background on the Surface Water Resource Protection Area, the Surface Water Resource Protection Area protects surface water drinking sources, which include the Hillsborough River, the Alalfia River, its associated tributaries, and portions of the Tampa Bay, Tampa Bypass Canal. The protection, some of the criteria includes the protection zone is the primary reaches of the rivers, which include the 100-year floodplain in addition to a 200-foot buffer to the 100-year floodplain. Tributaries to the Hillsborough River and Alalfia River are also based on the 100-year floodplain. And then portions along the bypass canal, that protection zone includes 1,000 meters, or I'm sorry, 1,000 feet extended past each bank on either side of the canal. The applicant proposes to, I'm sorry, with the recent updates to the FEMA maps, which the SWRPA is, or the Surface Water Resource Protection Area map is based on, the county reviewed the map against the updates that FEMA put on its floodplain maps, which, again, the SWRPA's are based on. And since the FEMA floodplain maps have expanded, contracted, or have exhibited changes to perennial flow, these are the updates to the SWRPA map that are being proposed and are to mirror those updates. Additionally, the proposal includes only named tributaries directly connected to the Hillsborough River or the Alalfia River. Ladies and gentlemen, the proposed request is consistent with One Water Chapter objective and policies that discuss the protection of surface and groundwater resources for current and future uses, environmental sustainability objective that discusses the protection of the Hillsborough River and acknowledges that it's a major source of drinking water, and intergovernmental coordination policy that discusses the coordination of amendments with local, regional, and state agencies. The Planning Commission staff recommends that Hillsborough County CPA 25-16 be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. This concludes my portion of the presentation, however, the applicant does have a follow-on presentation, and I request that you hold any questions until the conclusion of their presentation.
Request granted.
Good afternoon, Kim Cruz, Environmental Supervisor with Hillsborough County Environmental Services Division. I supervise the wellhead and surface water protection program and the phosphate management program. So we're here today to present our wellhead and surface water protection amendments. So let's get started. So go over some history about wellhead protection. In 1985, the Florida statutes required wellhead and surface water protections of public potable water resources. The county is required to identify those resources, adopt maps into the comprehensive plan, and create land development regulations for protection of those resources. In 1986, Safety and Drinking Water Act Amendment mandated states delineate and manage wellhead protection areas. And in 1992, the county adopted its first wellhead protection ordinance, which consisted of one wellhead resource protection area. 1995, the state of Florida adopted the wellhead protection rule into the Florida Administrative Code, and in 1998, federal EPA approved the state's wellhead protection rule. 2004, the county amended the wellhead protections, creating two wellhead protection zones. Zone 1 was designed for future public potable water supply wells, and Zone 2 for the current public potable water supply wells. Additionally, the county adopted its first surface water protection area and potable water wellfield protection areas into the land development code. Since the wellhead and surface water protection program is often misunderstood, I would like to first start out with the purpose and intent of this program. The program is designed to protect specific Safe Drinking Water Act systems and to protect public potable water supplies. It does not apply to private wells or similar, smaller, or smaller drinking water systems. Now let's get into the existing criteria. Wellhead protection areas are zones around public potable water supply wells or aquifer storage and recovery wells that meet the criteria for public potable water supply wells. The areas around public potable supply wells are based on a 10-year travel time, which were determined to give some degree of protection from identified sources of potential groundwater contamination. So now let's dig a little bit deeper. Public potable water supply wells are connected to public potable water system that is permitted by a consumptive use permit from the Water Management District to withdraw an average daily amount of 100,000 gallons per day or greater of groundwater, and is classified as a public supply well. And once again, aquifer storage recovery wells that are related to public potable water supply are also included. For surface water protection areas, I know Diego kind of like dived into this a little bit, these are zones around lands located adjacent to or near surface water bodies that are upstream of potable water supply systems. That would mean the intake structures that are directly connected to water treatment The Land Development Code defines those areas as the primary reach of the Hillsborough and Alalfia River, or the Alalfia River, and shall have a zone based on the 100-year floodplain plus a 200-foot buffer. Then the tributaries to Alalfia or the Hillsborough Rivers shall have a zone based on the 100-year floodplain. And then the protection zone along the Tampa Bay Bypass Canal from Fowler Avenue south to State Road 60 and along Harney Canal from the Hillsborough River to the Tampa Bay Bypass Canal shall be extended to 1,000 feet from the outside edge of the top of the bank on both sides of the canal. It's important to understand that the entire 100-year floodplain has never been used as the surface water resource protection area. The standards in this definition are specific to public potable water, surface water intakes located within the Tampa Bay Bypass Canal and Alalfia River, so upgradient from those So Hillsborough County staff, we conducted a review of the current maps and found that updates were needed this round of reviews. So we collected data from Tampa Bay Water, Southwest Florida Water Management District, and we hired a third-party consultant to conduct hydrologic modeling using models that are used by Southwest Florida Water Management District, Tampa Bay Water, and United States Geological Survey. Now I put both the current map and the proposed map right next to each other, so to give you guys a good comparison of what we're proposing here. Zone 1 is designed for future sources of public potable water supply wells, once again, 100,000 gallons per day or more hooked up to a potable water system. And then the green areas surrounding the cones of contributions that you see in the multiple colors on the left-hand side, those green areas are considered wellhead protection zone 2 for existing potable water resources. Pardon me. Since the adoption of wellhead resource protection area Zone 1 approximately 21 years ago, there have been no new public potable water supply wells constructed within that wellhead resource protection area Zone 1, and to date, there are no proposed. So Hillsborough County is proposing to remove wellhead resource protection area Zone 1. Now on the right is the county proposed wellhead surface water, wellhead resource protection area consisting of the hydrologic model plus an additional 500-foot protective buffer. Now due to the advancements in hydrologic models over the past two decades, today's models offer greater reliability and confidence. Specifically, the regional model had significant updates to like aquifer properties, calibration, pumping stresses, and to build a safety factor for the resource protective area, protection area, a max two-year average pump rate over a 10-year period was selected as the protective measure rate for particle tracing simulation. Keep in mind that these wells are not operated continuously on these max average pump rates. The county's methodology used also exceeds the state of Florida wellhead protection rule, which only requires a 500-foot radial setback. Moving on to staff's review of the surface water resource protection area. So we looked at the current surface water protection area map, compared it to FEMA's 100-year floodplain map, and noticed that FEMA has updated the map in the areas that SWRPA is located within. On the left is the current adopted map, and on the right is the proposed map. Additionally, not part of this request for the map amendments, we are proposing updates to the Land Development Code for consolidation and clarity of language, and to update other aspects of the Land Development Code, and some of it relates to these map amendments that are proposed. Hillsborough County did provide public engagement, we had two open houses and a virtual engagement for two weeks. We did receive quite a bit of public comments. A lot of them were concerned about their private wells, which this program is not directly, does not directly protect agricultural uses in the area. People were concerned about how these changes may impact that, and then increased development in the area. People were concerned that this could increase development in the area, but we were looking at land use in a lot of these areas, and a lot of them are already agricultural or residential. So that concludes my presentation.
Did Diego, did you present the staff's findings yet? Did you make a recommendation yet, or do you still yet have to do that? Staff's recommendation?
I did, but I'll do it again.
Okay.
All right. With that, Planning Commission staff recommends that Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Amendment 25-16 be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, this concludes our presentations, and we are available for any questions you may have.
All right. We had a couple individuals sign up for the public comment on this one, so I will start off with Melissa Nordbeck. She's here.
Good evening. Due to the current political environment and the erosion of home rule, now is not the time to remove Zone 1 protections from thousands of acres. Zone 1 was created to protect sources of future drinking water for public utilities, not private wells. It restricts high intensity and high-density land uses. For example, no industrial zoning is allowed, no landfills, no underground storage, no interim wastewater treatment plants, and septic tanks are required to have one acre of upland. You can develop and build on these properties, as long as it is not a restricted use. You can build houses and businesses. The restriction of one septic tank per acre and no interim wastewater treatment plant ensures lower density, and the restriction of no industrial uses ensures less intensive uses to protect groundwater. The study states Tampa Bay Water has not identified new groundwater supplies for public utility or issued new pumping permits in the last 21 years, and that preserving these areas for future wellfields is no longer necessary. The last review of the map was in 2021. Still, no permits have been issued, yet no update was recommended. But now after the 2025 review, the map must be updated to exclude Zone 1 throughout the entire county. Why the urgency now? The map shows the northwest corner of the county as almost entirely Zone 1. Keystone will be the most affected by these changes. We have the largest acreage currently within the Zone 1 protection area. SB 180 and Live Local have tied the hands of local government and planning agencies. If you remove any protections or change the existing map, you will not be able to add them back. As proven by the lack of an update in 2021, there is no urgent need to update the map now. Zone 1 can be brought back for discussion in the future when there is more local control. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Beth White.
Good evening. Happy Columbus Day, everyone. My name is Beth White, and I represent the Keystone Civic Association. While changing the review process from every two years to every five years is acceptable, taking away current restrictions, any current restrictions, especially the totality of 3.05.04, is not acceptable. Providing clarity on existing protections is one thing, eliminating protections against one of our most important resources is reckless. We also take exception to eliminating the word calendar from the notice in review. Excuse me. While we would like to see the word business days instead of calendar days, removing the word calendar leaves the interpretation of simply days ambiguous. With the controversial SB 180 in play, now is not the time for our local government to give up any restrictions on our natural resources or any portion of our existing comprehensive plan. Leave the current protections in place. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That's all we had sign up in the public comment, so I will turn it back over to the applicant for a response, three-minute response.
Hello again, Kim Cruz, Environmental Services Supervisor of the wellhead resource protection area, surface water protection area. So with regards to the question for 30504, those areas of the Land Development Code were cross-referenced with, and I know this is Land Development Code related and not map-related, but those regulations were cross-referenced with the consolidation. Those protections would basically, removal of those are basically consolidated into the future protections. Now with the concern for development in that area, we have under 30503, those protections in Zone 1, I mean, the only concern for residents out there, and like I said, this is for public potable water supply wells. These are for the wells that are identified on the map, not for private wells. But new industrial land use designations, I mean, you're talking like you would have to probably have a to probably have a consistency finding or compatibility fighting for a lot of these land uses that were prohibited in WERPA zone one to even be out there in Keystone area. Most of that area is developed as residential or agricultural. Other, other prohibitions like septic and sludge, that's already prohibited in the county. It's banned. Underground storage tank facilities. I mean, that, that would impact anybody who would want to go out there and farm if they had any tanks of pesticides and herbicides out there. Interim wastewater treatment plants, meaning advanced water treatment, you know, that, that's likely not ever going to be put out there. And sanitary landfills or fossil gypsum stacks, also highly unlikely to be put out into Keystone area. And
You still have time.
I don't know if you have anything else to add to it?
I'm Jeff Greenwell. I'm, work with Kim. I also work with the county Environmental Services. I'm a licensed engineer. Worked for the Department of Environmental Protection overseeing water protection for about 14 years. I think the WERPA one has had, was really well-intended in the beginning.
All right. Yeah, that's your time. That's your time. It's all right. We still have questions and discussions from the planning commission board, so you might still get a chance to say something. So, that's the end of the public comments. I will turn it over to our board members for questions, discussions, thoughts on this one. Not seeing any. I had a couple of questions myself. I'll kick it up. Oh, Commissioner Lenkis?
I did just want to ask about the issue that was brought up about the removal of, I think it was calendar days or business days? If any, if any additional clarity could be provided on that?
So, the, you're right. I didn't answer that question. Thank you for bringing that up. So, the removal of calendar days, because of land development code, the way that, the way that it's written, calendar days, when it says days, it means calendar days. And to be consistent throughout the rest of the land development code, calendar was removed. Now, if it's not calendar days, it's, it'll explicitly say business days. So that's why calendar days was removed.
Okay, thank you.
Not a problem.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yeah, I would like to, the answer in regards to, the engineer was going to say, I'd like to understand what he was going to.
What he was going to say?
Right. All right.
Okay. Are you saying that you want to, you want to?
Yeah, he was going to respond to the
Okay.
Zone one and the protection of the water.
All right, then I call upon Jeff Greenwell to talk about the WERPA zone one.
Okay. Sorry about that. So, didn't mean to get too much into credentials, but what, what I've experienced and watched over my years involved here, I've been working as a professional engineer here for about 35 years or so, and was around back in the water wars when all this sort of transpired. There, even though we put WERPA one in place in 2004, the last time there was actually any expansion to a major wellfield in the Northwest was before 1980. The last major well installed in a WERPA zone two was 85, I believe. We really think this is, in some ways, an overreach. On top of that, the last major wellfield put in by Tampa Bay Water was what's known as the Brandon Urban Development Wellfield, or Bud 7. It had no WERPA around it. The county came back in and gave it a WERPA two protection immediately following the implementation of that wellfield. Tampa Bay Water is presently looking at putting another wellfield in, again, not in a WERPA one, all the way in South County in the Baum River View area. We've had extensive discussions with Tampa Bay Water, specifically Warren Hogg about this. They are not prepared to give us the locations of those wells, other than that they will be on our ELAP property. Or the size of those wells, we do believe there will be about eight of them. We are poised. That is one of the reasons that Kim talked about having our ability to open up and add a WERPA two, which will just be a WERPA at that point, once we get the data, the locations, and the actual expected pumping rates. That, that's what I was looking to say about WERPA one.
All right.
So, what I heard just, I guess the basic thing is, you said, you mentioned ELAP, so the ELAP, the ELAP properties, so that means you can't build on them anyway?
That's correct. The other area, the area most, also adjacent to it is a highly, a highly dense, high-density residential area that probably about one house every 6,000 square feet. I'm not sure what R, R code that is. And then there is also some ag rural to the south. Rural estate, actually, I think, to the south. But the predominant direction of flow in this case is actually from the northeast, which is also all ELAP and/or that residential area. In fact, their initial test well, well is in the middle of the residential subdivision. Not unusual for us to put these, or Tampa Bay Water to put these wells in the middle of a residential subdivision. The entire Northwest wellfield follows gun highway, and there, if you ever look closely, you'll see on the right on the side of the road, all the way up, heavily commercialized and residential. So, it's not, it's not something that prohibits Tampa Bay Water from installing these wells.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kugler?
Yes, perhaps the response to Commissioner Bowden's question helps answer this, because I think the, the big concern was, we know we're growing in population by quite a bit, and it seemed odd at first to see a closure of a large water resource when you need that more for people. But it sounds like we're, we have estimates of great resources in other places that allows us to close the Northwest area to water.
I wouldn't say we have great resources when it comes to groundwater, but we do have resources. Another thing that's occurred during all of this, and sort of in the middle of this, is a lot of you are aware, at one point, Tampa Bay Water was authorized to pump 158 million gallons a day out of the consolidated wellfield. We had lakes drying up, drying up left and right, particularly in our county up there. I mean, there, there is a high, strong hydrologic connection up there. Pasco County suffered even worse. They were limited to 158. I think they're pushing closer to 200 million at some point. They, Swift Mud gave them a new consolidated water use permit in 2000 or 1999 that limited them to 90 million gallons a day. They don't exceed that number anymore. It has dramatically changed our hydrologic resources, surface hydrologic resources out there, and it's also limits them to further expansion on top of the fact that we haven't seen any to date anyway. That answer your question?
So, we have exploration possibilities beyond the Northwest, then, is, is my question, that we won't, we don't want to go thirsty?
No, I mean, I think that, well, they have, I believe Tampa Bay Water, I don't want to speak too much for them, they have plans for an expansion of a reservoir, expand the reservoir, build a second reservoir down there. That would probably come primarily off the bypass canal, as it already does, and the Alify River. And I think that would be the direction we would expect them to head.
All right. I had a couple of questions. Don't go anywhere, because it's probably for you, since you're the engineer. I thought the modeling was really interesting and really well-done. I was glad to see it come through, because I've been on this board for a while, and I can remember when we've had issues with the modeling and people coming in and bringing their own models, and whose models was right, so it's very nice to see you all put together your own model, and it's substantial and, you know, reputable. I had a question, because your model inspired me to look around the country at other places where they do this type of modeling, and since I'm a quant and a data nerd, I noticed that we did the 500-foot buffer, which is awesome, because the state only requires the radial, so it's a step above the state, but I also noticed that in, in a lot of other areas, they go to like the geo, the geohydrological breaks. So, if it hits into a lake, then they'll take into account the entire lake, as opposed to just the buffer, if it's upstream, right, for the upstream flow. Again, I was just wondering, were you aware of those sorts of things, or was there any thought towards those? And I ask because obviously, we're in a wetland area, where, you know, we're a peninsula surrounded by, you know, Gulf and Ocean, so water issues, groundwater issues are major in this area, and the places that I were looking at were other places around the country where groundwater and water issues are important. So I was just wondering if we had that sort of thought yet?
We did, we did look at that. That is in other places of the code. We just felt that the utilizing the max two-year average over the entire wellfield, combined with the 10-year travel time was, was, and, and enhanced, enhanced environmental rules on things like tanks in particular, made that not necessary, basically. We, we felt that, that, that was something that wasn't considered, and probably shouldn't have been considered at the time, but those rules for tanks in particular, landfills, all have really risen up over the last 30 years. I mean, and they were in their infancy when this, when our LDC rule was originally crafted.
Okay. And also, I mean, that's the part of this I like. I did have a part that I didn't like, because I'm me, so, you know, to Gemini, there's always something. I, you know, and I'm okay with the, the zone two changes, because clearly, the zone two changes are based on the modeling, right? Those speak precisely to the zone two changes, so it's almost irrefutable. The zone two has to change. To me, there's no substantiation for the removal of zone one. I'm just kind of hearing that, oh, well, we haven't used it in the past, so let's just get rid of it. And to me, that makes me a little uncomfortable, because we have such scientific, such, you know, numerical analytical backing for the zone two changes, and then when I look at the zone one changes, all that is no longer there, and we're just kind of going, well, it was that way, we haven't used it, we think we're not going to need it in the future, so let's just get rid of it. And, you know, to the person who spoke in the public's point, once we get rid of, once we take down that fence, if we don't know what's behind the fence, and if you can't assure me of what's behind the fence, then in the future, someone could get hurt by us taking down that fence. And so, it seems to me, an overreach to take down the fence without some substantial reason for taking it down. You know what I mean? And I'm not the type of person who likes to put onus on the development community. I think, like the person said, development can still go on out there, what the zone one precludes is the most egregious types of intensity being located out there. So in that respect, I'm, I'm kind of not understanding why we should remove the zone one. You haven't given substantial science, substantial analytics. It's just kind of like, ah, we haven't used it, ah, we think we won't need it, ah, we don't care about the private wells, we'll just get rid of it. And that, that seems a little bit flippant to me.
Well, we do, well, fair, fair, fair enough. And we do care about the private wells, trust me. I care about them, based on my background alone. What I would say is, if you actually look at the restrictions in the WERPA one, what you'll find is they're really not prohibitive of anything that would occur up there. We've already banned sludge, and, and I was actually heavily involved at that when I came on board about 11 years ago, banning sludge and septic application in the county. So, that's one, that's absolutely not going to occur, because it's already banned. There's technically no prohibition about, the septic tank is, it, one per acre, but what if I go up and put central sewer up there? There's only a restriction on putting a wastewater plant up there, which I wouldn't expect to be anyway. The county has made it a point that if you are close to us or anywhere near us, we will provide services. To that point, we just finished purchasing the very last franchise in the county that we're taking over and consolidating in our larger Northwest service area. It actually prohibits ag, zone one prohibits ag use for dairies and for concentrated animal feed.
Right.
That is probably the most legitimate of those concerns, but that is agricultural land, and it is zoned for agricultural use. So, that one gives me sort of concern the other direction. It's like, it's actually zoned to be ag, and I've got a restriction that prohibits ag that I'm not really sure ever gets close to any well, certainly not, not close to any well that's already in existence, and if they're properly regulated by the state, you never see that. The rest, I
Underground storage, underground storage tanks? Gas stations?
The underground storage tank has changed significantly, too. That regulation has changed significantly. Basically, you now have to have a monthly check. You have to have a double-line tank. You have to have secondary containment. You have to do and enter, you have to review your interstitial space in that double-line tank and report that to state. You have to have insurance. All of those things did not really exist, or were just coming to full bear when this was originally written. So we've seen another 25, 21 years where all of these new rules that were just coming into play when our rule was written, and it, and it seems that there's adequate protection for these areas associated with that. And as far as the timing question, the timing question, the timing question is a little different. Basically, I got the program in 2018. I read through the program, sort of based on my background, and said, oh, we're supposed to be reviewing this every two years. I couldn't really find any record of that occurring. It took me about close to 18 months to get a contract in place to do the modeling. I got the modeling done in 2021. Then in response to that, I learned that I actually needed to have both the LDC text amendments and the map amendments cross over the threshold at the same time because of the planning, because, a good thing, planning commission versus LDC, right? Which lost me probably another year and a half of my lack of knowledge of the process, right? So from a time, this is, the timing thing is coincidental, and certainly Senate Bill 180 is completely coincidental, in and of the fact that we, the whole West Coast got whacked by three significant storm events last year, and they wrote that rule to protect against additional codes that would impact people's ability to rebuild. This doesn't impact people's ability to rebuild, so.
And I want to be clear, I'm not, you know, groundbasing what I'm stating based on the timing. I know you're not doing anything nefarious. My concern is that maybe we're being a bit too narrow in our celebration of the model. The model's great, the model's good. Like I said, zone two needs to change, but it feels kind of like we've, we've got this win with the modeling zone two, and now we're saying, okay, because we got this here, let's just, everything we say is going to be right, and we know everything now, and to me, that's, that's a step too far. You know what I mean? I'm absolutely on board with zone two. I think the changes you made to zone two are incredible. I'm even on board with the surface water map changes, okay? That's, it comes from law, right? The laws change, the FEMA map changes, we have to change here. That zone one change is the only change that you guys are putting forward, where it's just kind of like, ah, you know, potato, potato, let's just do it, you know what I mean? And it, and she's shaking her head. I know you have your reasoning, but your reasoning, to me, doesn't sound as substantial as the reasoning for the other two changes, okay? So I'm not saying that there's no reason, I'm saying the reason given doesn't seem as substantial, and that gives me a little bit of pause, you know what I mean? Again, because once we change this thing, it's not coming back. Once that zone goes away, it, there's, there's no more restrictive stuff being passed through, you know, Tallahassee, so it just gives me a little bit of pause, that's all I'm saying, you know? And I'm just one vote on the board, so.
And what I would say is, we certainly weren't cavalier about it, I promise you. We worked extensively with Tampa Bay Water, whether they had concerns regarding the removal of WERPA one, and as noted, we don't have, we didn't get a single comment on the revisions being proposed. So they are not only an independent observer of our proposal, they are also probably the most directly affected party of our proposal, because the WERPA ones are only located around Tampa Bay Water wellfields. There are no WERPA ones around Plant City wellfields. There are no WERPA ones around Temple Terrace wellfields, only around the Tampa Bay Water. I can't tell you the origin of that, we couldn't find that in the record, but that is actually how it is set up, and as I indicated earlier, there was no WERPA one for the Brandon Urban dispersed wellfield, the Bud 7 wellfield, but we did subsequently implement protections for that, as we will do for the Baum. There is no WERPA one around the proposed, still not board-approved by Tampa Bay Water, the Baum wellfield. We will immediately open up the maps and say, once we have the modeling, and say, here is the protection zone.
All right. Thank you. All right. Are there any other questions, comments from the commissioners? Anyone out there? Commissioner Kugler?
I, I like, yes, I liked very much your comment about, once we let that fence down, it's, it's, it's open season. Is there a way to, to ensure, along with the past, along with our decision, some way to not just monitor the underground storage, but monitor the actual wellheads that supposedly don't need protection anymore? Is there a way to Is there a way to have that in there so we don't have that fence go totally down, and then we lose a major resource? I wonder if that's possible for us to vote that way.
Well, there are no wells in Whirpa One. And the Whirpa Two wells have monthly and annual monitoring, or quarterly, depending on the constituent. There's a host of different things. Some things are even more extended. Like certain constituents, you get relief from monitoring if they don't show a presence. So if you don't see a presence of radiologicals, you don't have to monitor them every year. You have to monitor them every three years. So they, all the existing wells are monitored on a frequency consistent, or a greater frequency in many cases when it comes to Tampa Bay Water. I can't speak to the other municipalities than are required under the Safe Drinking Water Act.
Right. And to be totally transparent here, I'm, I'm not silly. I know there's layers of protection. So there's, you know, Office of Underground Storage Tanks at the state that does regular reviews of storage tanks, ASTDR, who looks for toxics and things like that. There are layers of protection that come down for the federal government. I used to teach about it in environmental regulation at USF. So I'm not unfamiliar with these things. But again, right, when we take down this fence, and you're not telling me what's behind the fence, you're telling me that maybe this is there, maybe that's there, this could be there, this could, that could be there. I know in the past, when it's come to water, we haven't been that easy to let things go by. Water's always been this kind of analytical, why I celebrate the model. It's exactly why I celebrate the model, because it's come to that point of precision, and I just don't see the precision on the other side. But to Commissioner Kugler's points, there are layers, and that's what we're counting on, right? Those other layers, once that fence comes down, to take care of it in our own backyard here in Hillsborough County, so. Yes, yeah, you're more than welcome to.
And I, I think to Jeff's point, what he was trying to say is that the wells that are located in wellhead resource protection area Zone One, they are within the wellhead protection Zone Two. And the reason why there's a lack of data is because there are no wells just in Whirpa Zone One, because that is the future source of drinking water. So once, you know, once a well would become an existing potable water resource, then it would be adopted into a Zone Two. So that's why there's a lack of data, is because there is no well just located in the Whirpa Zone One. I think that's probably the answer you might be looking for. I don't know what data you would be looking for. Do you?
Well, to go basically further upstream from different wells, I mean, right now, we only go to a certain distance, and we assume only vertical movement, right? So what we're looking at, when you talk about the 100,000 gallons a day, we're talking about pulling out 100, recharge up through the aquifers, right? We don't even look at horizontal movement. There's a lot of different, other, other different testing and stuff that could go on for a further reach. It doesn't mean that it would explain things. It kind of makes things a little more convoluted at this point where we are in history. So I understand why we don't do it. But I think, again, previous to this, when we didn't have the data, we were very quick to go, we don't have the data, let's be careful. We don't have the data acknowledged, and we're saying, but we can still run forward with it. And I, I just find that uncomfortable. I mean, I'm just one person.
I understand.
Just one person, one vote. I'm not trying to cause trouble here, so that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Just wanted to put that on the record, so.
I understand. Let us know if you have any more.
All right. Thank you. All right. Are there any other questions? I see Ms. Orneeta moving, she has something to say.
Just two things. One, to add to the, to the layers. We had a briefing with a county commissioner earlier who had similar questions. And just one of the other layers in terms of approvals, any, most of the uses that I think, absent the agricultural use that was spoken about, that are in that Zone One list, would require some sort of a rezoning. So if somebody wanted to do a gas station with an underground storage tank in one of those Zone One areas, they would have to go through a rezoning that would go before the Board of County Commissioners. They'd have to decide whether that use was appropriate in that area. So there would be, there are a number of steps to one of those uses, a landfill or something like that, getting approved. So the other thing is, I would just remind the commission that if you want to, whether you want to find it consistent, but perhaps you don't, you have concerns about the removal of Zone One, or you want to find it inconsistent, but you want to articulate that you liked the other two parts of it, you could send separately by motion a letter to the Board of County Commissioners articulating the position, the, the concerns or the support for the other part. I was trying to think of another way of doing it, but I think a letter is the best way to do that.
All right. I'm not going to make a motion for a letter. I don't, I don't do letters. I put my comments on the public, and the elected officials watch these meetings, so they hear my comments, and that's it. It'll be what it is. So Commissioner Lauk?
Fair enough. I want to echo your sentiment regarding sending letters. I think it should be a rare thing for us to do as a body. I think it's necessary in some occasions. I think we recently sent one that was necessary. But by and large, I think our vote and what we say here will be our stamp of approval or not.
All right. Are there any other comments, questions, discussion items from the commissioners? Not seeing any at this time. Then I'll go ahead and close the public comment and open it up to motions from the commissioners on this item. Commissioner Kona?
Yeah, motion fine HCCPA 2516, comprehensive plan text amendment, surface water restoration protection areas, wellheads, all of that fun stuff, consistent with the comprehensive plan.
All right. We got a motion of consistency filed by Commissioner Kona.
Second.
All right. A second to that consistency finding by Commissioner Cardenas. Any questions, comments before we take our vote? I'm going to kick it over to a roll call.
Bowden?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Kona?
Yes.
Jefferson?
Yes.
Kugler?
No.
Linkus?
Yes.
Lauk?
Yes.
Joseph?
No.
Thank you. Motion carries six to two.
All right.
Chair Joseph and Member Kugler voted no.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for the information and for your time. All right. Our next agenda item, action item 2B, HCCPA 25-17, comprehensive plan text amendment, corridor preservation plan map and text of mobility section. And the presenter is Katrina Corcoran.
Good evening, Katrina Corcoran, Planning Commission staff. I'm here tonight to present on HCCPA 25-17. This is the corridor preservation plan map and text of the mobility section. Some background on this request. This is a privately initiated amendment. It is a text amendment that would be adding a quarter Fort Haimner Road to the adopted corridor preservation plan map. This map has historically been updated by the county, making this a unique amendment. And with that, there is a staff recommended policy addition to the mobility section's corridor preservation plan policies. I'll have more detail on that later in this presentation. Some background on the corridor preservation plan. The mobility section's map series includes map one, which is the adopted corridor preservation plan map, which you can see here. The corridor preservation plan map is utilized to protect future right-of-way from encroachment, provide connectivity, and ensure transportation corridors are adequate to serve planned growth and development patterns as defined in the future land use section. The map identifies the number of additional lanes needed on existing corridors or for new roadway connections needed to serve future growth. It also shows intersections and interchanges identified for either grade separation or reconfiguration. In coordination with the land development code, the corridor preservation plan map is utilized to establish setbacks for development and provide clarity about development potential within the future right-of-way. This slide shows the applicant's proposed changes of the Fort Haimner Road proposed alignment. As you can see here, it starts at 41, going south through I-75 and to the Hillsborough County line. It is located in southern Hillsborough County, and the roadway is currently not constructed. It is outside of the coastal high hazard area and the urban service area. Within the Manatee County Comprehensive Plan, Fort Haimner Road is shown as a proposed four and eventually six-lane roadway from US 301 to the Hillsborough County line. So there will be that potential connectivity that's preserved right-of-way further south. The roadway would be located within a group of 36 parcels that are under the control of one owner. The properties where the alignment would occur are currently utilized for agriculture with a future land use designation of agricultural slash rule. There are no proposed changes to the future land use designations for these parcels as a part of this amendment. Fort Haimner Road is a potential future connection to a proposed Fort Haimner Road interchange at I-75, so you can see the potential location there. The potential interchange is not part of this amendment process and will not be reflected on the corridor preservation plan map at this time. This slide shows the Little Manatee South Community Plan boundary and the urban expansion area, UEA boundary. This roadway alignment is within the Little Manatee South Community Plan. It's also within the study boundary for the UEA study. This BOCC-directed study will assess land use, infrastructure needs, and community character to develop recommendations for future planning decisions. Finally, the applicant has noted and provided documentation of significant growth and entitlements within Manatee County, south of the Hillsborough County line. And you can see in this applicant-provided map that there's a significant number of developments occurring in northern Manatee County. This slide shows the corridor preservation plan map with the applicant's proposed addition of the proposed Fort Haimner Road, which you can see in the southern portion of this map. And since I know that's pretty small, this shows this a little more zoomed in. You can see the roadway is orange. This indicates that this would be a maximum of up to six lanes. The Planning Commission received comments from the agencies that are listed on this slide. For the purposes of time, I will not be going through every comment received in detail. However, those are available in your packet. And instead, I'll be focusing on the comments received that are more relevant to the existing conditions in the area, as well as staff analysis. Note that Hillsborough County Public Schools did not have any objection or comment. And with that, I'll be looking at the Transportation Planning Organization comments. This slide shows the TPO Access 2050 Long Range Transportation Plan unfunded needs. The proposed Fort Haimner Road interchange is listed in the Long Range Transportation Plan as an unfunded need. You can see that snippet here, also shown on the map here. The TPO noted that the potential interchange received a $7.5 million legislative earmark in 2025 for a study to determine its alignment with final approval from the Florida Department of Transportation. It is staff's understanding that Hillsborough County has been working on a future update of the corridor preservation plan map, which will include an interchange in this area consistent with the TPO's Long Range Transportation Plan. The comprehensive plan directs that the corridor preservation plan be updated in line with the LRTP to address growth and mobility needs of the county. The proposed Fort Haimner Road is not within the Long Range Transportation Plan, but it does serve as a potential proposed connection to that potential interchange. This slide shows wetlands near the proposed alignment. And to orient you here, this is US 41, this is I-75, and this is the Hillsborough County line. The proposed alignment is primarily north of the majority of the wetlands. However, they are present near the alignment. The Environmental Protection Commission noted in agency comments that the proposed alignment could present permitting challenges due to the wetlands in the map path. They recommend that the quarter be shifted to avoid wetland impacts. Additionally, their comments noted that a wetland delineation survey is necessary to verify the avoidance of wetland and other impacts for the proposed roadway. This must be approved prior to any permitting or construction of the roadway. Protecting, enhancing, and mitigating environmental impacts are important considerations noted throughout the plan. The plan requires coordination with the EPC to protect and ensure no net loss of ecological values provided by wetlands. Staff are noting these comments to explain existing environmental conditions in this area. However, it alone is not a basis for inconsistency. The EPC's comments and the plan's policies do not directly prohibit roadway construction in this area. Additionally, because the roadway is currently not constructed and no engineering or design of the final alignment has been completed, it is staff's understanding that the roadway's configuration could be shifted in line with the EPC's comments and with the LDC's regulations without needing to adjust that alignment on the corridor preservation plan map. Finally, final engineering and approval of the construction and the alignment of the proposed roadway would occur outside of the comprehensive plan amendment process. This slide shows significant wildlife habitat in the area of the proposed alignment. Again, this is US 41, this is I-75, and this is the Hillsborough County line. The proposed alignment is north of the significant wildlife habitat that you see here. According to agency comments that received from Conservation and Environmental Lands Management, the agency has no objection to this amendment, subject to the condition that the proposed roadway provides wildlife crossings where it traverses Curiosity Creek and Wildcat Creek. The comprehensive plan states that wildlife quarters should be protected and enhanced with designated crossings for the passage of wildlife. These issues can best be addressed through the roadway engineering and design process. Now that we've gone through some of the existing conditions in this area, as well as agency comments, the proposed request is consistent with several of the objectives and policies within the comprehensive plan. Starting with Little Manatee South Community Plan. As noted previously, this Little Manatee South Community Plan, the roadway alignment, is located within that plan. The community plan's vision statement discusses the potential for future roads and specifically supports regional connectivity to a potential future I-75 interchange. While an objective of this community plan is to maintain conservation areas, it also anticipates growth through urban service expansion. This is a unique consideration that differentiates this rural community plan from other rural community plans. Additionally, the community plan recognizes the importance of enhancing infrastructure and interconnectivity provided by roadways. Moving on to the intergovernmental coordination policies listed here, these discuss coordination with other jurisdictions. As noted previously, Fort Haimner Road is considered a roadway connection to that northern Manatee County portion of the extension of the roadway. These policies encourage coordination with other jurisdictions for the purposes of having common methodologies for measuring transportation facilities, and also coordination on infrastructure management and needs between jurisdictions. Next up, you'll see the mobility section policies listed here. These are for the corridor preservation plan policies. The corridor preservation plan map, as noted previously, is utilized to protect future right-of-way from encroachment and to provide connectivity. The Fort Haimner Road is not within the Long Range Transportation Plan, but it does serve as a proposed connection to this potential interchange. Finally, you'll note the future land use section and capital improvement section policies listed here. All of these policies support the provision of infrastructure needed for growth and development within the plan. This slide shows other related, other related policies, the majority of which we've already discussed, including the environmental and sustainability and intergovernmental coordination sections. These policies discuss coordinating with EPC, as well as the protection of wetlands and mitigating those impacts. Additionally, the Little Manatee South Community Plan has a few strategies and policies that discuss protecting environmental areas. The mobility section policies that you see here also speak to that environmental consideration. But what I'd like to draw your attention to is that they also look at future land use when projecting future transportation needs. The property where this alignment would occur currently have a future land use designation of agricultural slash rule. However, this area is being studied as a potential UEA to accommodate future population and job growth. UEAs are publicly initiated, and historically, the corridor preservation plan map has been utilized for public right-of-way planning. This amendment to the corridor preservation plan map is a private applicant with a proposed alignment located within parcels under the control of one owner. This presents a unique circumstance, not contemplated under the current comprehensive plan policies, where a private landowner may want to plan for long-range infrastructure to support future development in an area. The adopted mobility section policies were written from the perspective of the corridor preservation plan being updated by the county. However, the plan also supports the provision of infrastructure needed for growth and development, and this is specifically noted for UEAs. Given this, staff have recommended the following policy to the applicant's plan amendment. And this reads, this is proposed mobility section policy 4.2.6. Enable infrastructure planning to occur concurrently with or in advance of the adoption of urban expansion areas as outlined in the future land use section. Preliminary planning efforts may include, but are not limited to, updates to the corridor preservation plan and/or the Long Range Transportation Plan. The intent of this policy is to recognize that additional infrastructure could be required within and necessary for the UEAs. Staff have coordinated this language with the private applicant, and they are comfortable with staff's recommendation for including it with the amendment. With that, Planning Commission staff recommends that HCCPA 25-17 be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, with the addition of the proposed mobility section policy 4.2.6. In addition to the proposed policy, the plan's support of necessary infrastructure for growth, coordination with neighboring jurisdictions, and the recognition of potential urban services and an interchange within a rural community plan, support the addition of Fort Haimner Road to the corridor preservation plan map. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions after the applicant's presentation. Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Chairman. My name is Pat Neal. I thought that presentation by Katrina Corcoran was really good and really clear. I'm hesitant to say anything more. My name is Pat Neal. I'm here with my son and partner, John Neal, and six planning, transportation, and legal professionals that we've brought to answer questions. Our Neal team has built 124 residential communities, mostly planned communities, in the five counties south of Hillsborough County, namely Manatee, Sarasota, Charlotte, Lee, and Collier Counties. About, about 24,000 homes in Bradenton. We've always been land developers for the last 55 years, I might say. Always been conscientious of the environment, always been good with working for the government. I will say, I've won every environmental award made to members of the legislature from every of the- from every of the, even the most radical of the environmental organizations, because he's always been able to work with governments. Our team is in the initial stages of a private development south of the Little Manatee River, which we plan to develop over the next 30 years. We plan to work with your county for the next four years in the creation of the plan on lands currently owned by the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. As you consider this, I'd like you to consider two things that are unusual in our team, in our Neal team, which you might not find in the other land developers that come before you. The first is, we do most of our infrastructure work in public-private partnerships, like the bridge that you see in front of you. We've built public-private partnerships in Manatee, Sarasota, and Charlotte County and the city of Venice, and we do so, for the most part, adjacent or near properties that we're involved with. We believe that our infrastructure expertise may help you build and finance the infrastructure on this property, and very likely, we will be involved in the interchange at I-75 and Fort Haimner Extension. Second, our building company, Simply dwell, is our area's largest builder of for-sale attainable housing. We build and sell housing in Manatee County from $278,000. Katie Labarre of Stantec will describe our proposal. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Katie Labarre. I'm an AICP certified planner with Stantec, and I'm here on behalf of First State Property Group this evening. The request that you have before you is to amend the corridor preservation plan map to add an alignment for a future six-lane roadway from the Manatee County line to US 41 in southern Hillsborough County. This is a unique application, as Katrina shared, because the entire corridor is planned on property that is under single ownership. The past cell colors on this map on the screen represent the approved development in northern Manatee County. Existing and proposed roadway network provides a regional benefit that will serve 29,000 households that are anticipated in Manatee County, and it will also serve the future communities here in Hillsborough County. This request is timely because the evaluation of the urban service area expansion in Little Manatee South is underway. Planning for regional infrastructure and connectivity early in the process is an important long-range planning practice. As has been stated, an interchange is also proposed at I-75 and Fort Haimner Road, and while this isn't the subject of this particular application, it's going to be an important regional connection for this area. And I will also note that the Interstate Justification Report and Project Development and Environment Study associated with the interchange will kick off in the next week or so. The Fort Haimner Road extension in Hillsborough County will represent nearly 32 miles of public roadway that connects from US 41 to Bee Ridge Road in Sarasota County. The segment in Hillsborough County represents approximately four and a half miles of that entire segment. There has historically been a significant lack of east-west mobility between US 41 and the county line in southern Hillsborough County, and so, extension of Fort Haimner Road opens up significant and meaningful regional connectivity. To date, regional coordination has been critical to implementing the planning, permitting, and construction of the segments along the way. We've worked closely with transportation planning organizations, both here in Hillsborough and in other counties, Hillsborough, Manatee, and Sarasota County staff, as well as the Florida Department of Transportation. The final segment of Fort Haimner Road in northern Manatee County is projected to be constructed in the next two years. And so, it is coming, and it will be built to the Hillsborough County line in the next two years. Evacuation for all hazards is another critical component as the county considers expansion of this network. The map on the screen shows the existing statewide hurricane evacuation routes, and you can see that extending Fort Haimner Road will support regional evacuation of vulnerable populations both along the coast, as well as low-lying inland areas. With Fort Haimner Road, residents will be able to choose whether they wish to use or bypass interstate and find a number of different alternative routes to the center of the state. Families aren't focused on jurisdictional boundaries. They're focused on getting to and from work and meeting their daily needs. Expansion of this network aims to connect existing, as well as future, communities. Regional corridor planning in this manner is forward-thinking and will support the creation of jobs, economic diversification, and vitality in southern Hillsborough County. The amendment is consistent with the Little Manatee South Community Plan, and it supports a multimodal network that will provide for regional connectivity. This project furthers and enhances the goals, objectives, and policies of the Comprehensive Plan, and we've just shared a few policies that further support the request before you We've reviewed the proposed policy with staff, and we are in full support of its inclusion in the Comprehensive Plan and really appreciate staff's collaboration in working through getting that language just right. Tonight, we respectfully ask that you recommend transmittal of this request to the Board of County Commissioners. We have a team of experts who are here and happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you for the opportunity to present.
Thank you. All right. We didn't, Katrina, oh, staff's recommendation? Or is there more?
No, it's the same as Diego earlier, that staff recommend that it's consistent.
Okay. Public comments. We didn't have anyone sign up for the public comment on this one, so I will turn it over to the Commissioners for discussions, questions, opinions. Commissioner Orton.
I just want to say, the school district is in favor of this. Our school is just north of this property, and having it go to 75 would be a great help.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions, comments? I did want to say for myself, because when it came through the briefing, I asked for coordination, and I could see a lot of coordination in the report, so kudos to staff, kudos to the Neal team here, all your experts. I can see that everyone was looking at this, and although everyone might not get what they want in the end, there was a lot of coordination and discussion of this, so I'm looking forward to see what this develops into. So, my comments. Commissioner Jameson.
I'd just like to say, I'd like, sorry, to commend the forward-thinking and the process and this development. I think it's a great idea.
Right. Any other comments, questions from the Commissioners? Commissioner Lauk?
I'm curious, how much of the proposed roadways currently in the urban service area?
It's not within the urban service area.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments, questions from the Commissioner Bowden?
Yeah. How much of the proposed area in this CHHA?
It's not within the coastal high hazard area. It's not. It's not within the coastal high hazard area. It's not within the coastal high hazard area or the urban service area.
All right. Commissioner Linkus.
I just wanted to comment that I think the change to the plan language is forward-thinking in terms of the urban expansion area, the need for coordination perhaps in advance of that designation. So, that does make a lot of sense to me. I think that was well done. Thank you.
Good point, Commissioner Linkus. That's what tripped me off to the well-coordinated thing, the fact that you all, as an agency, were able to catch that and come forward with something to make our policy documents better. So, thank you all for the hard work you've done on this one. Commissioner Cardenas, yes?
Yeah, it kind of stands out to me that it's so quiet in here, or something so big, that just says that it was done really well.
Right. Are there any more questions, comments, praise from the Planning Commission Board? Not seeing, oh, you have something, Commissioner Lauk?
I'll expand. I'm in favor of the project. I think it's fantastic. I think it's something that should have been publicly initiated in the past, when you look at like the good that it's going to do. However, from a staff point of view, we're either going to have an urban service area or we're not. And I don't feel like we're being consistent with how quickly and fluidly this passed through, and I don't know if we're being fair to other developers that come in here and want to develop outside of the urban service area. So, I think this was, yes, it was a great partnership, and a lot of discussion with staff got this through, but I don't think we're being very consistent with it, even though I'm in favor of it.
Mrs. Orinida's got a retort.
Well, if I can just clarify, that this is within an area that we're studying for the expansion area, and that's why we did want to tie the roadway and being added to the corridor preservation plan to it being an urban expansion area, because if this was in a different part of the rural area that wasn't being studied for expansion, we might have looked at it differently. But they're helping us, they're looking at an area that we're planning to expand in and that we're working on that study for. So, it's, yeah.
Again, I'm completely in favor of it, right? And you know how I feel about the urban service area. I don't even think we should have it in the first place. However, I do think we need to be consistent when we apply it, especially from a staff standpoint, and we've started to evolve over the last year of looking the other way because we know changes are coming, where in the past, when something like this would have come forward, it would have been almost instantaneously inconsistent finding because it's not inside the urban service area, especially when you look at the scope and scale of it. So, I just would encourage staff to be, to apply some consistency until such time that we have the policy changed. And again, I'm for this. I'm going to vote for it, but I would like some consistency.
Yeah, your point is well taken. Thank you.
Commissioner Linkus.
I just wanted to say, I understand your concerns, and if I, when I first came on, some of the initial urban service area expansions were coming into play, and I think that I correctly learned through that process that the urban expansion area piece is sort of, has a little bit of a one-up on the urban service area piece in that it allows for the coordination of infrastructure, and that's why I do think that the language in the plan is forward-thinking and makes sense and is consistent with the overall vision here.
Commissioner Bowden.
Well, the reason I asked that question, because as I was reading through the document, it says map amendment only, and asked a question about, is it in the CHHA? And it says yes. I'm looking at it now.
And this is for HCCPA 25-17? I'm not seeing that as on the first page. Is 45, 45 is which part of the packet?
Mrs. Orinida has it.
It's in the applicant's application, because I think some of their folio numbers go into the coastal high hazard area. Some of their property that they own, because the applicant owns quite a bit of property. And if you want them to clarify, you can, but I believe it's because some of their folio numbers do go into the coastal hazard area, but the...
The road alignment is not within the coastal high hazard area, and if anybody...
Hello, for the record, Hannah Swinski. I'm a planner, and I have signed a speaker's card. The owner owns 36 parcels within the area, so part of the area that the ownership owns is within the coastal high hazard area. However, the alignment does not, so the proposed roadway right-of-way is not in that area.
Thanks very much. I'm just, you know, I can only ask the question of what I...
You're not going crazy.
I appreciate it.
It wasn't explained, I mean, so, you know, that would alleviate that question if it was actually pointed out.
All right. Commissioner Kugler.
Yes, I really appreciated the forward-thinking infrastructure before building. I wish Morris Bridge Road would have that. But I also like the tendence to sustainability and resiliency issues with wildlife corridors. Thank you.
All right. Are there any more comments, questions? Commissioner Kona's giving me that look like we need to vote. All right. Not seeing any more lights. I will go on ahead and close the public comment on this one and open it up to motions from the Commissioners on this item. Commissioner Kona?
Yeah. Motion to approve HCCPA 25-17 Comprehensive Plan text amendment and find it consistent with the Comprehensive Plan.
All right. Commissioner Jameson?
Second.
All right. We have a motion of consistency finding by Commissioner Kona, a second to that motion by Commissioner Jameson. Would all signify, oh, wait, wait a minute. Does anybody have any questions or comments before we take our vote? Would all signify their agreement by saying aye? Aye. Those opposed? This motion carries unanimously. All right. Thank you very much for your time and the information.
Your staff did a great job, but they asked us plenty of tough questions.
All right. All right. Our next agenda item, let me get my book back open. We are on HC-2C, HCCPA 25-19 Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment 4950 Saffold Road, USA Expansion, and the presenter is Lilian Linehan.
Good evening, Commissioners. Lilian Linehan, Planning Commission staff here to present HCCPA 25-19 located at 4950 Saffold Road. This is a privately-initiated map amendment that is small in scale and approximately 10.01 acres. The applicant has requested to expand the urban service area, and this amendment is associated with HCCPA 25-20, which is a request to change the future land use category from agricultural rural 1 to 5 to residential 4. This is the general location map. As I mentioned in the last slide, it is associated with HCCPA 25-20. It is in the rural area and within the limits of the South Shore Area-Wide Systems Plan and the Wyomma Village Community Plan, and was located north of Saffold Road and west of County Road 579. Here's an aerial of the site. The site is outlined in pink, and the blue line indicates the existing urban service area boundary. Now, I will present some site photos. So, this is looking north of the subject site from Saffold Road. This is looking north from Saffold Road to the single-family use on the subject site. This is looking west of the subject site from Saffold Road, and this is facing east of the subject site from Saffold Road. And this is on the subject site looking north. The proposed amendment would bring 10.01 acres into the urban service area, requiring at minimum connection to public water and sewer. The proposed amendment received no formal objections. However, it did receive a few comments from the following agencies, which are important to note. The Public Utilities Administration stated that this system currently has sufficient potable water capacity to accommodate the proposed land use change, but public potable water service does not exist within a quarter mile from the subject property. The system also has sufficient wastewater capacity to accommodate the proposed land use change, but again, public wastewater service does not exist within a quarter mile from the subject property. Community and infrastructure planning staff analysis of traffic impacts would be addressed in the report for the accompanying plan amendment for HCCPA 25-20, and based on that traffic analysis, there is adequate capacity to accommodate the future additional trips generated by the proposed future land use change. Hillsborough County Public Schools stated that Wyomma Elementary, Shields Middle School and Summer High Schools are projected to be overcapacity, given the existing approved development and the proposed amendment, and currently, additional capacity exists in adjacent concurrency service areas at the high school level. However, adjacent capacity is not available at the elementary and middle school levels. The applicant was advised to contact the school district for more information. The proposed amendment is consistent with the following objectives and policies of the Comprehensive Plan. The proposal meets the intent of Flu's Objective 1.1 and Flu's Policy 1.1.9, which directs 80% of the population growth into the urban service area and establishes criteria for publicly and privately initiated urban service area amendments. In this case, the subject site is adjacent and contiguous to the established urban service area, and the site is adjacent to the publicly-initiated amendments that the Board of County Commissioners directed staff to initiate. The request also meets all criteria established in Flu's Policy 1.1.9. According to Flu's Policy 3.1.1, 3.1.2, and 3.1.3, compatibility and gradual transitions of intensities and densities between different land uses shall be provided for as new development is proposed. The residential 4, future land use category designation surrounds the site, and there are low-density residential developments on all sides. The transition to residential 4 on the subject site with an urban service area expansion would allow for density and intensity that is compatible with the existing area and therefore is consistent with all of these policies. Flu's Objective 4.4 and its associated policies seek to protect existing neighborhoods and communities and those that will emerge in the future. The request is consistent with neighborhood community development objective and policies as the surrounding land use pattern is comprised of mostly single-family residential and agricultural uses. South of Saffold Road, there are mainly public, quasi-public, and institutional uses, and the proposed request complements the existing community character and development pattern. The proposal also meets Goal 5 of the Wyomma Village Community Plan. Goal 5 of the plan seeks to encourage housing to accommodate a diverse population and range of income levels. The expansion of the urban service area and change to a future land use designation of residential 4 increases the type of housing allowed on the subject... use designation of residential four increases the type of housing allowed on the subject site, as well as allows for housing on a smaller lot size, which can be more affordable for the residents in the Wy Mamma Village area. Planning Commission staff recommends that the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. And this concludes my presentation. I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Does the applicant have a presentation?
Yes, they do. Is it combined? Okay. Kami Corb with the Law Firm of Hillward and Henderson for the record for the applicant. I don't really have much of a different presentation. This is a little notch, we'll call it. If you could switch that. Okay. So this little notch is at the bottom of what was Council Growers, privately initiated plan amendment that came in and was approved. And we only can file for what we control and have an owner's authorization for. So we're coming in for the two, two of the lots in the notch. The notch was created, I think it was explained at your briefing. These properties were not originally WVR2. They had a different land use category, so they didn't get caught up in the broader publicly-initiated amendment either. So we're here to just add on this piece. And although there's not water and sewer a quarter mile now, it's actively under construction and will be built. And the school district has both a middle school and a elementary school site reserved in both the council and JPL Rude sites, and in fact actively appraising those now. So I'm here to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much. We did not have anyone sign up in the public comment for this item. No, we didn't. So I'll turn it over to commissioners for any comments, discussions, or questions. Not seeing a lot of excitement. Then I will close the public comment and open it up to motions on this one. Commissioner Kona?
Yeah, motion to find HCCPA 25-19 comprehensive plan amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Commissioner Lauk?
Second.
All right. We have a motion of consistency finding by Commissioner Kona, and second by Commissioner Lauk. Any discussion, questions from the commissioners, clarifications before we vote? Not seeing any, then would all signify their agreement by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. To our next agenda item, 2D, HCCPA 25-20 comprehensive plan map amendment, four-nine-five-zero Saffold Road. All right, okay. And the presenter is Alexis Myers.
Good evening, Commissioners. Alexis Myers, Planning Commission staff. I'm here to present HCCPA 25-20 located at forty-nine-fifty Saffold Road. This is a privately-initiated map amendment that is small in scale and approximately ten-point-zero-one acres. The applicant is requesting to change the future land use designation from agricultural rural one to five to residential four. This is the general location map. It is associated with HCCPA 25-19 to expand the urban service area. It is in the rural area and within the limits of the South Shore Area-Wide Systems Community Plan and the Wy Mamma Village Plan. It is located north of Saffold Road and west of County Road 579. Here is the aerial of the site. The site is outlined in pink, and a blue line indicates the urban service area boundary. The site currently has single-family uses and agriculture on the property. Data indicates that the site may indicate, I'm sorry, that the site may contain a significant wildlife habitat, and is also in the FEMA Flood Zone X. Agriculture is to the northwest and further southeast. Single-family uses are to the northeast and west, and there are public, quasi-public institution uses to the south and east. Here are some site photos. This is looking north of the subject site from Saffold Road. This is looking north from Saffold Road to the single-family use on the subject site. This is looking west of the subject site from Saffold Road. And this is facing east from the subject site. And here is also looking north of the subject site. Currently, the future land use designation is agricultural rural one to five. The agricultural rural one to five category allows one dwelling unit per five gross acres and a maximum floor area ratio of zero-point-twenty-five. This designation allows for the consideration of farms, ranches, feedlots, residential, neighborhood commercial, offices, industrial uses related to agricultural uses, and mining-related activities. Other future land use categories shown on this map include natural preservation and agricultural one to ten. The applicant is proposing to amend the future land use category to residential four. The residential four allows four dwelling units per gross acre and a maximum floor area ratio of zero-point-twenty-five. This designation allows for the consideration of agricultural, residential, neighborhood, commercial, office uses, and multipurpose projects. Next are the impacts. As far as existing conditions, currently under AR one to five, the site could consider up to two dwelling units or a hundred-and-nine, thousand-and-eight square feet of non-residential uses. Under the proposed future land use designation of RES four, the site could consider up to forty dwelling units or a hundred-and-nine-thousand-and-eight square feet of non-residential uses. During the rezoning process, commercial locational, I'm sorry, commercial locational criteria may affect the allowable square footage for potential non-residential development. The proposed amendment resulted in the increase in development potential by aligning higher residential density. And then as far as the consistency review, the proposed amendment is consistent with the following objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan. The residential four future land use designation surrounds a site with low residential, I'm sorry, low-density residential on all four sides. The transition to RES four on the subject site and urban service area expansion would allow for development that is compatible with the surrounding area and would be consistent with the objectives and policies regarding to compatibility and neighborhood protection. This amendment is also, I'm sorry, also meets the intent of South Shore Area-Wide Systems Plan, the Wy Mamma Village Community Plan, and the Liverpool Communities Element. Planning Commission staff recommends that the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. And this concludes my presentation for HCCPA 25-20. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the applicant have a presentation?
Kami Corb with the Law Firm of Hillward and Henderson. I don't think you need anything else from me on this, and you have more cases to hear. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. All right. We had no one sign up in the public comment for this one. So I'll turn it over to the commissioners for questions, comments, discussions. Not seeing any. I will go on ahead and close the public comment and open it up to motions from the commissioner. Commissioner Lauk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move we find HCCPA 25-20 consistent with the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan and forward it to the governing body for approval.
All right. Commissioner Bowden?
Second motion.
All right. We have a motion by, motion of consistency finding by Commissioner Lauk, and second to that motion by Commissioner Bowden. Are there any questions or clarifications needed by the commissioners before we vote? Not seeing any, then would all signify their agreement by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to our next agenda item, which is actually continued. Item 2E, HCCPA 25-21, plan text amendment, planned environmental community has been continued to next month?
I know they continued out to the January cycle amendment, so renotice.
Okay, renotice. All right. So next up, we will have 2F, HCCPA 25-22 comprehensive plan map amendment, one-one-one-one-five, South County Road 39. And the presenter is Willow Mickey.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Willow Mickey with Planning Commission staff. I'm here to present HCCPA 25-22 located at one-one-one-one-five, South County Road 39. This is a privately-initiated map amendment that is large in scale and approximately one-eighteen-point-seventy-five acres. The applicant is requesting to change the future land use category from agricultural rural one to five to residential one. This is the general location map. The site is in the rural area and within the limits of the South Shore Area-Wide Systems Plan. Here is an aerial photo of the site outlined in pink. It is located west of South County Road 39 and south of Lithia Pinecrest Road. Within the vicinity of the site, agricultural uses are located to the northwest and south. Single-family residential surrounds the site on all sides with public quasi-public located to the southwest. And here we have some site photos. This photo is looking down State Road 60 with the site on the right, and we're facing south. This photo is looking onto the existing residential on the site from State Road 60, facing west. Here we're looking onto the site from Old Welcome Road, facing northwest. This is looking onto the site, and you can see the adjacent residential on the right side. We're facing northwest. And here is a picture of the entrance to the residential subdivision down the street, approximately a thousand feet from the edge of the site, facing west. The site is in the AR one to five future land use category. This allows for the consideration of farms, ranches, feedlots, residential, neighborhood commercial, offices, industrial uses related to agricultural uses and mining-related activities. Surrounding land use categories include AR one to five to the south and southwest, and includes an elementary and residential one to the northeast and west. Further north, the public quasi-public land use includes an elementary school, and there is also natural preservation and agricultural one to ten further east. The request is to change the site to residential one, which allows for the consideration of uses such as agricultural, farms, ranches, residential, neighborhood, commercial, offices, and multipurpose projects. Sorry, went too far. To the future land use map and future land use categories that establish This slide outlines the potential impacts of the requested land use change. Currently, permitted land uses. Although the residential one category uses may be considered for the site, the proposed amendment to RES one future land use category would allow for the consideration of a higher density that is generally not compatible with the rural area. The proposal is also inconsistent with Objective 3.1 and its associated policies related to compatibility. Although the RES one designation is present to the west, north, and east of the subject site, the site itself is not located with an area designated to support densities exceeding one dwelling unit per five gross acres. Additionally, the majority of nearby parcels with a RES one future land use category were originally designated as such in July nineteen-eighty-nine and were not the result of plan amendments. Given these factors, the proposed change to RES one is inconsistent with both the policies guiding development in the rural area and the established character of the surrounding area. Objective 4.4 and Policy 4.4.1 require new development to be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. The proposed request of RES one would not complement or appropriately integrate with the established character of the adjacent land uses that are lower in density to the northwest, south, and further east of the property. Approval of this request would represent a departure from those policies associated with the intended function and identity of the rural area. One of the strategies within the South Shore Area-Wide Systems Plan is to continue to support and preserve agricultural activities that have historically been an important part of South Shore heritage and maintain agriculture as an integral part of the South Shore economy landscape and natural resource base. Goal two of the plan states that agricultural and related uses are the preferred use of areas outside the urban service area boundary. The change to residential one would conflict with the plan's emphasis on preserving agriculture as a foundational economic and cultural element in the rural area. Planning Commission staff recommends that the proposed map amendment be found inconsistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. That concludes my presentation. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Does the applicant have a presentation?
Good afternoon, good evening. Isabel Albert with HAF. I'm representing the applicant, and I have my presentation. As you can see here, staff did describe where the area of the amendment is. It's approximately one-hundred-and-eighteen acres, and it's in the rural service area. What we're requesting today is an amendment from agricultural rural to residential one. You have residential one to the north and to the, to the south, I mean, sorry, to the north, to the east, and to the southeast. And therefore, this was just an extension of what the existing land use is in the area. The Planning Commission staff report stated that the rural area is a long-term agricultural use, large lot residential use, and undeveloped natural areas. But if you actually look at the definition of the comprehensive plan, it does state that it's predominantly residential in nature with some associated agricultural uses, and the within lots are land, are approximately one acre or more. If you further continue looking at the table 2.2, there is this whole section here that is compatible and consistent with the comprehensive plan to be located in the rural area, and residential one is a listed land use appropriate for the rural service area. They also made comments of concerns about changing significantly the character of the area. But in reality, it's adjacent to a thousand-five-hundred acres of residential one. We're not introducing a new land use within a pocket of agricultural rural or one to ten density. We are adjacent to a rural residential one category. And this goes into the policies that they stated, 1.2.1 and 1.2.2, where they do say that the minimum density is one to five. However, there's some exceptions to that. And these exceptions are listed, and I show them in the square here. It says, you know, unless you're located in a rural community, which carries higher densities. And then the next policy further goes into the definition of what is a rural community. A rural community are generally existing areas shown on the future land use map as a density higher than one to five and up to one dwelling units in the urban, outside of the urban service area. This is perfect definition of what a rural community is. You have a thousand-five-hundred acres of residential one adjacent to our site. And they've talked a little bit about that. But what do you have in a rural community is you have planted lots. You have development on one-acre lots. The Pinecrest Elementary School is located to the north, but there's also Pinecrest Football Park. And this park has a football, has tennis, and has an area where you can purchase snacks and things like that, which is basically, you know, a community park for little leagues and things like that. Further, it went into, I don't know, policies of gradual transition. Gradual transition is already there. It's already been established with a residential one adjacent to agricultural rural. We're not changing any of that pattern that's already been put in place in the, on the future land use map. Staff felt that introducing this density is not compatible with the intent of the rural area. The intent of the rural area does recognize residential one as a land use. And they felt that it would allow potential development that could be too dense for the portion, for this portion of the rural area. This is what a few portions in the area that has residential one adjacent to it. So again, I do not share the same comments as the Planning Commission. Staff reports describe this area as predominantly surrounded by, comprised mostly of agricultural uses and residential uses. The agricultural uses is our subject site. There's two parcels adjacent to us owned by the same property owner, but predominant character of the area is residential. It's a residential, single-family development. And with our proposal, the plan does say that you have to ensure that new development is compatible with and respectful of existing development pattern. Again, the exact existing development pattern is residential one. Talk about the South Shore Area Community Plan, saying that predominantly they want agricultural uses in this plan. This, as you can see, is a large, big area comprised most of South County. But if you read what it says, it says they recognize that there's agricultural uses in the urban service area, but they prefer to have it in the rural area, which absolutely makes sense. That's where you find the large lots and everything. But it does not say that they discourage anything else. And our site is located right here, within the cluster of those planted lots little over there. Reviewing agencies, so far had no objections to it. I did want to just to clarify that the Hillsborough County Transportation Planning Organization stated that there's no sidewalk on either side of the road, but they should have added adjacent to our site. That is correct. There's no sidewalks adjacent to our site, but the yellow line here shows sidewalks. There's currently existing sidewalks just north of our site to the school. And also, the community and- Staff reports describe this area as predominantly surrounded by -- comprised mostly of agricultural uses and residential uses. The agricultural uses is our subject site. There's two parcels adjacent to us owned by the same property owner, but predominant character of the area is residential. It's a residential, single-family development. And with our proposal, the plan does say that you have to ensure that new development is compatible with and respectful of existing development pattern. These -- again, the existing development pattern is residential 1. Talk about the South Shore Area Community Plan, saying that predominantly they want agricultural uses in this plan. This, as you can see, is a large, big area comprised most of South County, but if you read what it says, it says they recognize that there's agricultural uses in the urban service area, but they prefer to have it in the rural area, which absolutely makes sense. That's where you find the large lots and everything, but it does not say that they discourage anything else. And our site is located right here within the cluster of those platted lots little over there. Reviewing agencies, so far, had no objections to it. I did want to just to clarify that the Hillsborough County Transportation Planning Organization stated that there's no sidewalk on either side of the road, but they should have added adjacent to our site. That is correct. There's no sidewalks adjacent to our site, but the yellow line here shows sidewalks. There's currently existing sidewalks just north of our site to the school. And also, the Community and Infrastructure Planning Department, it says there's no adequate capacity. There's no adequate capacity in 25 years from now. Right now, it's functioning at 60% capacity, and it's a Level B. With that, I just want to go over, again, the policies that I've reviewed. I'm a certified planner. I've looked at this, and I feel we meet all of this. We're consistent with all these policies with this one. It was not allowed in the rural service area. It would not allow residential 1 land use, nor would it have any exceptions in Policies 1.2.1 to allow this use. And again, the gradual transition and the compatible with the area, the area is already developed with single-family residential and a residential 1. And that concludes my presentation. I'm here if you have any questions. Again, as a certified planner, I feel like when I reviewed this first, it met these policies, and I'm here. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We're going to kick it over to the public comment on this one, and we had a few people sign up for this one, so we will start off with -- I'm going to start virtually. Let's see if Gordon Dawson's on the line?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead. You have three minutes.
Yes, thank you, commissioners. I live almost directly across the road from this proposed site. My concern is twofold. One thing, we have no public utilities out there. It's all septic tanks and wells. Right now, it's a strawberry fields mostly, and I know there's wells there, but they don't run 24/7, 365 days a year where you're going to put 121 houses possibly in there or 118 houses, but each one of them would have to have a well. I don't see any plans for public utilities to be coming down 39 at present. And then the other thing is the traffic. Like I say, I live about a mile and a quarter south of Lithia Pinecrest, and every afternoon, the traffic backs up past my house to get to Lithia Pinecrest and State Road 39. So there's an issue there with the amount of traffic, and if you're going to add 121 more houses, 118 more houses, then that's a big issue in my concern.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Tony Parker. Is Tony Parker on the line? Okay.
Tony, can you hear us? He does not seem to be responding. He's on the call, though.
Okay. Well, go forward to Carolyn Johnson, then. Is Carolyn Johnson online?
Carolyn, go ahead if you can hear us.
Lost him?
She's also on, but we're not hearing her.
All right. Well, I will move to the people in the room then and circle back and try them one more time before we close out. Josh Butler?
Good evening. There was a lot of discussion about adjacent properties, and there was one main property or one section that wasn't shown in any of the presentations. Directly south of this property, we own 15 acres. That's not a small section of land that's not a -- you know, that's not used for just residential. That's a ranch. We have cows there. Directly behind me, adjacent to this same property, is a 20-acre piece also used for a ranch. If you look at online photos, go all the way back to the early 2000s, whenever the first one-acre pieces were put in the neighborhood, the picture was shown. If you look at my property in particular, and you look at the watershed prior to that section going in, there's an extremely small amount of water that goes across our property. If you watch the -- by year, you look at the overhead photos taken, we now have, when it rains, we have an entire flood that goes across the center of our property. So I fear that adding something like this when it comes to that, not only would it lower our property value, being 15 acres adjacent to a bunch of one-acre pieces, which is going to lower the pool of people interested in our property if we were to sell it, you're going to change the amount of water that comes across our property at that time. So there's a lot of large pieces. There's a lot of people that care about this area. We really don't want a glorified subdivision going in right next to us. Across the street, large pieces of property, five acres, 10 acres. So all the pictures show everything that is, yes, to the north there. The Park, Pinecrest Elementary, and the park that was discussed, that is an old-school football field, a community. When you go there, it's the community. The tennis courts that were described, they're deplorable. It's not tennis courts. It's like, oh, this is a great community to come -- no, no, this is a deplorable tennis courts that haven't been touched in 20 years. So I really urge you to vote no on that.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have -- it says Crystal Butler, but it's crossed out. Does that mean no? Okay. All right. We'll circle back around to those online. Did we have Tony Parker? Did Tony Parker arrive or get connected up? Try him one more time? No?
Tony, can you hear us?
Nope. All right. We'll try Carolyn Johnson one more time. See if Carolyn can hear us. All right.
Sorry, she's not answering either.
All right. Well, going once, going twice. That's it. I will turn it back over to the applicant now for response. Three-minute period.
Thank you. Again, for the record, Isabel Albert. There was mention about the public utilities. That is correct. It is in the rural service area. Minimum lot size for utilities is a half an acre of upland, which is why this is one acre is appropriate in the rural service area. The concerns about the traffic, so State Road 39 is on the corridor preservation plan, meaning that we'll have to preserve some area in order to make that road -- the intention of that road is for enhancement. So there's that. And then there was mention about the watershed, concerns about the watershed and water retention and things like that if it gets developed. Again, that was all addressed during construction reviews. As you know, they have certain rules and regulations of state laws in order to maintain the stuff on site. I am not disregarding that there's agricultural rural south of us. There is absolutely south of us agricultural rural. The big parcel to the southwest is owned by Swift Mud. There is a lot of county-owned land in the area. Again, I went through those policies and these goals and objectives and policies of the Comprehensive Plan that is stated, and I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you. All right. And now over to the planning commissioners for questions, comments, discussions on this one. Not seeing a lot of excitement. Ms. Ornita?
I just wanted to clarify staff's interpretation of Policy 1.2.1 states that within the rural area, density shown on the future land use map will be no higher than one dwelling unit per five gross acres unless located within an area identified with a higher-density land use category on the future land use map. And then it goes through the different areas, but the key word there is identified, meaning that it is already shown with a future land use category that is higher than one unit per five acres. So then, this property is not identified with a future land use category higher than one unit per five acres currently. It is one unit per five acres. So if it was already identified as a rural community, it would have previously been identified as residential 1, as the area to the north is. So that then, Policy 1.2.2 would -- does describe those areas that are rural communities that are higher than 1 to 5 and up to 1 to 1, that are existing areas on the future land use map. Again, the key word there being existing, not areas that we're adding to but are currently on the future land use map. Certainly, we understand they're on the border of that, but the line had to be drawn somewhere, and it was drawn where it is. And that is staff's interpretation of the policy is based on those words that are written in the plan.
Commissioner Laub?
Question for staff. The property immediately to the east across the street is also designated R1, and on the parcel maps, it looks to be significant. I don't know how many acres it is. Are there any planned developments that are happening on that parcel across the street? Given that we have such a substantial development directly to the north, I wonder what the parcel directly to the east looks like.
There has been one exception of a Comprehensive Plan Amendment, HCCPA 17-04. It was adopted in 2018. That changed from AR 1 to 5 to RES 1. However, staff had found that to be inconsistent.
It's approved through the county commission?
Yes.
Okay.
That was to the east of the site? Is that the --
I --
I'm not sure which parcel you're talking about to the east. Sorry.
Maybe I can pull up.
It's right across the street.
Yeah, those parcels right across the street. I see they are really small. I don't know whether they were plotted that way predating the plan or the --
Is it just the residential 1?
Like where it's --
That we're seeing on here?
Yeah, right across from the site.
So if you look at the actual map from a street-level view, it's clearly filled, it's stubbed out, there's transport there. We have a significant development directly to the north, and I'm curious to hear what is happening directly across the street to the east, because I think we have a function of the market driving what is appropriate in that area versus what our long-term plan says. So if that is plotted and there's zoning in flight or approved or in place, it sounds like it's already gone through us and approved. I wonder where that is in state, and frankly, I just feel like we got about half of the story from staff's presentation. When we look at that property directly across the street in an R1, and it's directly through the Board of County Commissioners, so do we know what's happening with that and where it is in flight from a development standpoint? Go ahead.
I don't know.
Also, I mean -- Hang out, Cardenas. Let her respond.
Oh, I was just looking for a photo. Directly, yeah, to the east.
If we go back to the aerial, if you want to show the aerial, that would be great, please. Thank you. And so that's the parcel on question, right? If we go to the north, we see the housing development. If we go directly to the east, that's also R1. It's gone through the Board of County Commissioners. So I wonder, it looks like it's plotted, there's several parcels in there. Is there a development that's in flight currently? Do we know?
I don't believe so. I don't know for certain, but I can find that out. I don't know, David, if you have the map up. Okay. Thank you.
All right. We'll keep trying, and they'll come back to you. Cardenas?
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, as I'm looking at this, if you're looking at the aerial version of the map, the satellite version, you know, you've got those two communities just north of there. You've got another community off north but to the left. It just seems to me like it's a, you know, a little bit of a trend that's going that way. You've got larger lots that could very easily continue to be assembled and going in that direction. It's right on that line. I was actually surprised to see it come through as inconsistent myself.
All right. Commissioner Laub?
No, just to finalize my comments. I mean, I was not for this one initially. I read it, and as I puzzled through it, and I saw, I think it was page 20 of 56, showing the current zoning, and then diving a little bit deeper to see what was across the street and what was approved from a land use perspective, it looks like it fits right in with where that area is moving when you look at what's been approved in the north and what's been approved directly across the street.
Thank you, Commissioner Laub.
Excuse me.
Who's that HTV?
This is Gordon Dawson.
Can we get a muted HTV? Is anybody in HTV there? Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments from the planning commissioners? Ms. Ornita?
If I might, I would just say that certainly I understand the comments from the commissioners. And I just -- my comments earlier were just to explain staff's interpretation of the policies, but I certainly understand the -- we recognize the land use pattern as well.
And I just want to throw out there the disclaimer that if we are going to have a motion against staff, we're going to need some policies to support that, so I'll be thinking about that. Commissioner Laub?
Yeah, and apologies, I didn't mean to come off in any way like it was nefariously left out. I just think it's an important element that we've missed on this occasion to say what is happening in the area of the general land use development. We have that directly across the street. It's gone through this body. It's gone through the Board of County Commissioners, and it's approved for the land use plan that the applicant is asking for today, and that wasn't in staff's presentation. And I think that's very important information.
If I may, the residential 1 that surrounds the site has been existing since the 1980s. That was already designated as RES 1. The only exception that was a Comprehensive Plan Amendment that changed to RES 1 was that 1704. I'm not exactly sure exactly where that CPA is located, but I do believe that the residential 1 that surrounds the site has been there since the 80s.
The information that one of our -- Melissa Linehertz online was able to look up, the land use across the street along Old Welcome Road there that you're seeing along Brenham, and Old Welcome kind of wraps around, has been there, that land use has been there since the 80s and 90s. So that pattern has not been a recent amendment.
Point of fact, I heard 2018, that there was a land use case that was approved through this body and through the Board of County Commissioners directly to the east. Is that not accurate?
Where was the one that you said from 2017?
17-04 is the only exception.
17-04 is the only exception. On March 1st, 2018, the future land use was changed from AR 1 to 5 to residential 1. Staff found it inconsistent with the applicable policies and recommended against its approval. That is the only plot of land of residential 1 that was because of the CPA.
But where was that?
Where was it?
Yeah. Can we potentially find?
It's killing me. Isabel Albert, for the record, that was just north of us. Yes, that's right. The Planning Commission staff found it inconsistent. However, it was approved by the board. Thank you.
Okay.
It was north of the site.
It was north. It was north, not east. Okay. Okay.
So the property across the street just has the zoning designation, and that is it from the 80s. Okay, that makes a lot more sense. That's very helpful. Thank you.
And just for clarification, the zoning across the street to the east where those parcels are is AS 1.
But that's not taken into consideration here because we don't do zoning, so let's all get that clear, that our decision is based on consistency or inconsistency with the Comprehensive Plan, right? So we'll keep that at that.
Sorry for the confusion. I should have had that ready to go.
It's no problem. My own comments, I could have gone either way on this one when I got my briefing. I thought, you know, like Ms. Ornita says, the basis of this is that the line has to be drawn somewhere, and I don't knock staff for drawing the line. That's their job. If this board feels that we want to cross the line, we have the authority to do that, right, by going against staff. So to me, it's staff did a great job, and the two things that kind of sway my decision on this one, and I'm inclined to follow what staff says, I wasn't originally, I was kind of either-or leaning to, you know, the applicant, but when she came through and she said, Ms. Mickey, you did an excellent presentation, what keyed me in was that the fact that a lot of the stuff that's out there that I was leaning on has been there since the 80s, right? So that's significant. I mean, that stuff's been there for a while. We all know what went on back then. I don't know if I want to be tied to that. But the second thing was the homeowner who spoke, right? Mr. Butler out there, and then I think there was a Mr. Dawson on the line who spoke about it, and it keyed me in that there's some people out there in the community who don't necessarily want to see this come in. So in that kind of sense, I'm more to fall on the side of staff and say it's inconsistent unless there's some large reason or no voices out there to change it. So that's just my two cents on the whole thing. But any other thoughts or comments from the commissioners on this one? Commissioner Linkus?
I guess I just want to say I thought the applicant did a really wonderful job, and I think this is a tough one, but I do think that the preponderance of evidence is that this is an area that has a rural character, and I'm looking at the maps of kind of what's just to the east. It looks like there's like doggy daycares. There's the shape of the lots is more historic, like rural type and character, and my sense in looking at this is that this is, you know, that I'm going to lean towards supporting the staff's decision on this one.
Thank you, Commissioner Linkus. Are there any other comments or thoughts opining? Are there any other comments or thoughts opining the commissioners? Not seeing any. I'm gonna close the public comment on this one and open up two motions from the commissioners on this one. Anybody out there? All right. Commissioner Linkus, I'll give it to you. HCCPA twenty-five, twenty-two.
I would like to make a motion to find HCCPA twenty-five, twenty-two consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Consistent or inconsistent?
I'm sorry, inconsistent.
All right, so you want to, you want to correct your motion?
I would like to make a mo- I would, I meant consistent with this, I'm going with consistency with the staff's findings here, but I'll make a motion to find HCCPA twenty-five, twenty-two inconsistent with the con plan.
All right.
Second.
Motion of inconsistency finding by Commissioner Linkus, a second to that inconsistency finding motion by Commissioner Kugler. Any comments, questions, clarifications needed by the commissioners? I'm gonna kick it over to a roll call vote on this one.
Bowden?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Kona?
No.
Jefferson?
Yes.
Kugler?
Yes.
Linkus?
Yes.
Lauk?
No.
Joseph?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried six to two. Commissioners Kona and Lauk voted no.
All righty. Thank you all very much. Next up on the agenda, we have something that's been continued apparently, two G HCCPA twenty-five dash twenty-three, comprehensive plan map amendment, one seventeen Northover Road has been continued to.
Uh, that's in the October cycle, it'll be coming back in January.
All righty then. We will move right on to two H HCCPA twenty-five dash twenty-four, comprehensive plan map amendment, ten six oh one, Paul Buckman Highway, and the presenter is David Haye.
Good evening, commissioners, David Haye with your planning commission staff. The next item for your review is HCCPA twenty-five dash twenty-four. It's located at ten six zero one Paul Buckman Highway. The request, it's privately initiated, it's small scale, it's approximately four point seven four acres. Currently, the subject site is agricultural rural one to five and the agricultural one to ten future land use category, and the applicant is wishing to go to the light industrial future land use category. The, the subject site, it's located up here in the northeast corner, this is Paul Buckman Highway running up to the Pasco County line, this is the general location, it's out within the rural area, and there is no adopted community plan within this area. Here we have an aerial of the subject site, it's kind of pushed, as you can see, usually we typically have the pink in the middle, this is because the Pasco County line is, is just to the north, so we, all you'd see is white. But this is the subject site, you could see the area has very large lots within this area, there are some smaller lots that kind of surround the site. This large thing that you see over here, this is the mosaic mine up there, it's been up there for quite a while, it's set off from the road. When you go up Paul Buckman Highway, you might not even know it's there because there's a, a lot of vegetation. There are trucks though that occasionally go into the facility, but it is a heavy industrial use back there. There are also railroad tracks that come down along Paul Buckman, but as you can see, it's mostly rural in the surrounding area. We'll take a little tour around the subject site. Here we're facing southwest, we're standing on Paul Buckman Highway with, looking toward the site, this is the subject site down here, this of course is Joanne's Restaurant, that's kind of in the front of the subject site. Here we're facing west toward the subject site, Paul Buckman's kind of behind the photographer. Here's the restaurant, that's been up there for quite a while, it's a CN use, it's within the parcel, it's right adjacent to the subject site on Paul Buckman. Here we're facing north on Paul Buckman Highway, the subject site is behi- is to the left, kind of behind, this is that heavy industrial site, you could see, you can't really see it from, from Paul Buckman. Here we're facing east on Paul Buckman, towards that mosaic site, the subject site's behind the camera. And now we're facing south on Paul Buckman Highway and the subject site is over here on the right. All right, the site is in the agricultural rural one to five and also a portion in the agricultural one to ten, future land use categories. Currently, it is allowed for consideration of farms, ranches, feedlots, residential, neighborhood commercial, like that restaurant that you saw, offices, and industrial uses related to agricultural uses and mining-related activities. The, I should probably describe the map, the, this green here is the agricultural one to ten, you've got that sliver of the ag rural one to five, you've got natural preservation to the south, and here's that heavy industrial, there is a small existing light industrial use, that was a plan amendment in twenty seventeen, I believe, just to the north of the subject site. Here's the proposed future land use map if this sub, if this request is approved, you can see the site is now, that would be the light industrial. Should note, there is a residential parcel partly within front between Paul Buckman and the subject site, there's a small parcel there in the front, but the, the, basically surrounding the site is all that agricultural one to ten. The change from agricultural rural one to five and, and ag one to ten to the light industrial would allow for an increase in potential development by allowing greater commercial intensity. Currently, the site is under the, the five acres, so typically you could not get any development, but if it's, if it is a lot of record, there, they can get one residential unit on site. Also currently, it can be considered for up to fifty-one thousand six hundred and eighteen square feet, again, of commercial neighborhood uses or those ag-related industrial uses under the existing future land use. The proposal would increase not, potential non-residential square footage up to a maximum of a hundred and fifty-four thousand square feet, there would be no residential entitlements that could be considered on the site under the light industrial future land use category. Typically, we do send this out, we did not receive any objections from our reviewing agencies. It should be noted, the Hillsborough County Community Infrastructure Planning Department did comment that there is not adequate capacity to accommodate additional trips generated by the proposed future land use in, in the future condition. Your staff has reviewed the request with the currently adopted comprehensive plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County and found five main areas of inconsistency. The first area deals with policies related to the preservation of the adopted rural area. Objective one point two and associated policies set out the preferred development pattern within the rural area focusing on, in this instance, long-term agricultural uses and large lot residential. Though there are existing industrial uses to the north and east, staff found the proposed subject site would be inconsistent with that established rural-style development pattern, the industrial use to the east, a mining operation is set, and since light industrial is not a category that is encouraged within the rural area, staff found the request inconsistent with objective two point one and objective two point two and their associated policies. The fourth area deals with policies related to the proposal's relationship with the existing context of the surrounding area. Staff found that the subject site is surrounded, again, by those residential lots designated the rural land use category. There is also a parcel located in front of the subject site between the site and Paul Buckman Highway that is designated the AR one to five and currently zoned CN, housing that longstanding restaurant. CN uses are allowed to be considered in the rural area, the introduction of industrial uses would allow for the consideration of, of, the introduction, excuse me, the introduction of industrial uses would allow for the consideration of uses that are typically not found within the rural area, like non-agricultural-related storage, contractor yards such as plumbing and electrical-related, and machine shops, to name a few. Planning commission staff found that this introduction of uses would be inconsistent with that established rural development pattern. And finally, staff found the site inconsistent with neighborhood protection policies, specifically objective four point four and associated policies. The introduction of non-agricultural-related industrial uses would not provide for a compatible development pattern with that existing residential pattern out there, and based on that, your planning commission staff does recommend that the proposed map amendment be found inconsistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the owning, unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. That concludes my presentation, I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. I presume that's the applicant coming forward there, applicant's representative.
Good evening, commissioners, Chris McNeil with McNeil Engineering on behalf of the applicant. I appreciate your time tonight. As noted, the, the request is to change agriculture and agricultural residential to light industrial. This is specifically got a companion rezoning with it that's for open storage, RV boat, equipment, truck storage specifically. The site is four point seven nine acres. Agency support, let's talk about that, there was some inconsistency notes there, but from a support side, the planning commission did state an objective two point two that the LI may be considered for this site. Affordable housing also stated that the proposed LI is, is being consistent with and in line with the current development patterns in the area, and if, and if developed, the LI could add jobs to the growing economy, I'll come back to that. Also in policy four eight one, high-intensity non-residential development shall be located external to emerging and established residential neighborhoods and accessed on arterial and collector roadways. Keyword on there, arterial. No, again, no agency comments were received. In response to agency comments, staff mentioned a few times that this was predominantly ruled, but in actuality, it is not. I disagree with that. It is predominantly industrial with HI and LI along the corridor and up into Pasco, it was convenient that that was excluded out of the map, that this is the county line just north of that HI where it says mosaic, and that industrial continues on up, and they're showing there were industrial heavy and industrial light is used to buffer to their agriculture, very similar to that CP case in sixteen oh one that was handled on the west side of, of thirty-nine just north of our site. So I gave you that there for reference, and that companion PD that it had back in September sixteen, it was approved six oh, just, just north of our site. And up until now, that was kind of on an island by itself, this is kind of following that pattern, not in conflict with that pattern. Staff also said on page six under their one point six that, that the railroad serves as a separation of use, but in actuality, I think it speaks to the intensity of the area. The FDOT Tampa Bay Regional Freight Plan designates it as a major SIS transport along the industrial corridor and one that stops directly in front of the site. This is a picture from the expert out of the Tampa Bay Regional Rail Network, and that red dot, if I can point to it right there on the pointer finger, that is directly across from the site. It's a major part of the railroad, railroad network identified in their report. Page seven in the staff report, paragraph two also says that those staff can't consider buffering. The fact is, or excuse me, they're, they're talking about the buffering, I'm saying that the fact is it'll be required. In the companion rezoning, that staff is talking about recommending no wall but buffering and screening, and that's exactly what's required and what we're providing in that rezoning. One thing to note too, here with the FD, the FDOT PD and E, they were requiring ninety-six feet of corridor preservation along the front of the site. I noticed there was a lot of discussion about the buffering on the mosaic side, although we're not talking about buffering, that's land use right up to the railroad, then railroad, then State Road thirty-nine, and then the LI requesting. Though that may be, there's still a hundred and twenty-six feet total that's required for us to leave undisturbed, per the FDOT ninety-six feet plus the scenic corridor of another thirty, then buffering, so that's a hundred and twenty-six feet that's left there. This is the picture of the companion rezoning plans, you can kind of see that mimicked in there a little bit more along the frontage, and a colored image here that gives you a little bit better picture of what that buffer is required along the frontage from corridor preservation and from scenic corridor. In addition to the buffers that are required by ODC for whatever this would be, barring PD that shows the limited amount of open storage area that would be remaining, although it's significant for the area. Also, there is a significant amount of support, not only directly adjacent to, but also in the area, so there's, I have the letters of support here, which I'll present, I think most of them are in the file. The, there's very significant adjacent support and also local support, which is important for where we're headed next. These are the support letters that you can see. One of the things that staff did not talk about, they talked about two, three, and section four, but not goal seven. Goal seven speaks directly to the industrial section, and let me read you a few of these. To maximize Hillsborough County's economic potential, maintain an adequate supply of land area to provide for long-term economic vitality of the community preserve areas that are best situated for economic development, that enhances the county's economic well-being from a threat of conversion to retail, commercial, higher-density retail, excuse me, residential land use, which should improve the county's jobs to housing ratio to create employment in industrial uses in relationship to relative residential development. This is a perfect location for that. Objective seven one, the county shall pursue thriving economy through the promotion of target industries as defined in the Florida statutes, which are focused on national and international competitiveness. Additionally, the county will promote businesses that provide diverse employment, opportunities that promote an appropriate job and housing balance where people can live near where they work. Again, another perfect location for this to be transitional and to be close by work. Seven one two, economic development areas shall be any area with land use designation, including mixed-use categories consistent with the targeted businesses or industry located, excuse me, associated with desired economic growth. Another great location for economic growth. Seven one three, competitive nights, excuse me, competitive sites and existing office commercial uses are important to the econo- economic future of unincorporated Hillsborough County. In addition, having targeted industry jobs located proximate to residential development for the workforce and site design flexibility so that, shall be considered to support this effort. Again, the companion site, site plan is moving forward simultaneously. Also, seven dot one dot eight, county utilize and comprehensive competitive site program, inventory, and mapping of office and industrial land sites to protect and encourage existing or newly identified strategic located industrial land sites for future expansion and economic development activity. These land sites are crucial to the long-term economic well-being of the county and may receive financial and other regulatory incentives as provided by the county. This corridor is, as I noted before, is, is a main corridor for not only freight but also for rail with the hub directly across from mosaic. This is an economic development solution, it's, it's a minority woman-owned, it'd be small business, it's a safe and off-street storage for RV boat, equipment, and truck storage. The increased efficiency of the growing regional freight mobility corridor, which is the thirty-nine including the rail, supporting the economic development in the neighborhood community by providing this service and also the proposed use is quiet, low trips, and no infrastructure required. Additional supporting concepts for this request, the FDOT Tampa Bay Regional Freight Manual says, not manual, but a report says there's a shortage of truck parking and that most of the truck parking is done forty-five minutes outside of Tampa. This is located exactly forty-five minutes outside of Tampa on a main truck route designated Hillsborough County Truck Route. Shortage, there's a shortage of RV boat and equipment storage in nearby the community and crease, excuse me, including residential and local small, small businesses. There's a need. There's more than thirteen thousand additional population in planned communities around this area where the parking shortage of, of business vehicles is not required. You may or may not know, but the trucks have to stay on those designated routes, they're not allowed to go off into the communities, and therefore, this is where it will be an ideal location for them to stage or park, but not in the right way, somewhere safe. Expansion of the development and infrastructure along the Paul Buckman Highway requires supporting needs within this corridor. As you know, and I showed, there's industrial. As you know, and I showed, there's industrial and light industrial north of the site, directly across from the site, and just recently approved south of this site. It's obvious that this corridor is connecting not only the existing operations, but future FACs and future improvement, future growth that the counties and the state are dependent upon. This is located on an arterial roadway, which also, again, has an official, which is an official Hillsborough County Truck Route. The ADT currently is around 10,300, but as noted by the FDOT PDNE, there's plans to increase this from two-lane to four-lane divided roadway. And lastly there, I skipped that one next to last. The FDOT Tampa Bay Regional Freight Plan designates this route as a mainline freight truck route. In summary, the subject property is situated well on a Tampa Bay Regional Freight Plan Mobility Corridor, which has been identified as a mainline, including SIS and CXX, and the area supportive of warehouse, light industrial, and commercial uses, referencing back to Goal Seven, Objective 7.1, 7.1.2, and 7.1.8. The site is definitely compatible with the adjacent rail and thoroughfares. The application has received the approval from the affordable housing based on the project site being in line with current development patterns, referencing Policy 4.8.1, which states that high intensity and non-residential development shall be located external to emerging and established residential neighborhoods and assessed on a arterial and collector roadway while, now I'm changing policy, but while being near those same residential developments, as referenced in Goal Seven, 7.1, and 7.1.3. Lastly, the subject property is strategically located with an ability to support the economic future of Hillsborough County by targeting industrial jobs and promoting local area growth opportunities and balance with nearby housing so people can live where they work and reduce emissions. Goal Seven, Objective 7.1, 7.1.2, and 7.1.3. And with that, I would like to introduce the owner and the owner's husband, and they would like to say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sri Devi Parvathneeni, owner of the proposed business located 10601 Paul Buckman Highway at Plant City. And we are here today to present the supporting documents for open storage that would benefit small business. I will let my husband Ragwa add more to this.
Good evening, Commissioner. I'm Ragwa Momreni, 15th Leving, Moore Court, Dover, Florida. So any project, any land use starts with a little bit of use case. So I don't know about all the land use policy, that kind of stuff. I'm a little bit nervous. So I'll tell you the use case why it all started. So I have a little bit of property in Plant City. So one of my friends, his name is Robert Kowach, he has a lot of equipment. He used to have store in US 92, and he approached me one and a half year ago. He kept me in my property. So as a friendly gesture, I kept it there. And then at some point of time, I got a pro, anti- code violation. So to move the equipment, and it took a lot of effort for me to move it and move it and that kind of stuff. And I bought this property on this 3R 39, and then I want to rent it. And then he approached me again, I want to rent it and put the stuff here. That's where it's easy to include, that kind of stuff. Then I want to do it in a right way than what other people do, right? So I also felt I mostly focus on Plant City because I have a 20-acre farm as well. So this is, I just want to present what the information I have. So in Plant City, in North Park, a lot of people, my friends bought the homes over there. So what challenge they have is recently they approved almost 5,000 houses and 13,000 residences moved in. So they can only park their personal vehicle. If they have any trailer or a trucker and a boat, they don't have any place to, you know, place. So that is what, that's one of the facts in not this Plant City. And recently, if you're all aware, there is a 430-acre business park approved by Plant City Commission, and also they're extending water and sewer all the way to Nigeffin Road, which will bring 4,000,000 square feet, 4,000,000 square feet industrials and office warehouses there. Obviously, they also need a lot of small businesses and bringing water and sewer in that area in the next one year or so will bring a lot of commercial spaces as well, commercial businesses as well along Paul Buckman Highway. And so this site, since I want to do it in a right way, out of 11 acre, even though it presented the land use application, but bottom line use case is I want to do only the open storage business to allocate the small businesses. Only 4.14 acres and the behind six acres, I want to keep my cows. Currently also do cow farming in Plant City where I have my cows and all that kind of stuff. Just to make sure, I don't have any plans of moving this up, anything, divide, anything like that. I want to keep all 11 acres on my family name and then keep as it is, the structure and everything, and just keep it. And also, I want to assure the current, the land use will also support with all the 13,000 new population and all 430 acres new industrial site, and this site is just four miles away from that place. So all those people need, small contracts need a place to park their vehicles, and mine is unfortunately on the right on truck route, so easily going and going out. And also, it is very easy to the new, all the new population that are coming in that area. So I believe this is economically impacting to the small businesses looking for safe and sound stories. I also have a farmer friend currently has.
All right, so you're gonna have to wrap it up. You're out of time.
So the idea is this will address the county land use goal, 7.1, less travel mile, and close to where people live and do business. So that is what my proposal is, sir. And my goal is to, even though the application says all big things, which I'm not a professional, my engineer already addressed, this is only open storage, 4.7 acres and six acres. I'm not disturbing anything like that. So just keep it in the rural character.
All right. All right, thank you. Thank you. All right. We had one person possibly sign up for this. R. Garamella?
Hello, Commissioner. I'm a neighbor of Rag, so 10575 Paul Buckman Highway. We bought the property in January, and we were doing tropical farming and cattle breeding. And we do not have any objection for the proposed zoning change. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. That is all we had sign up in the public comment for this one, so I'll turn it back over to the applicant if you want a three-minute period of response.
No, sir, they were in support, so happy to take that. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
All right, thank you very much. Over to the planning commissioners now for discussion. I'll remind everyone that staff's finding was inconsistent. If anyone wants to make a motion in opposition to staff, we are gonna need some policies. The applicant provided plenty of good ones, so they are out there. But I'll open it up now to discussions by the planning commissioners and questions on this one. Commissioner Kugler.
Yes, I just had a question. My thought was perhaps the access to the property would be through the Joanne's Restaurant because the 126-foot natural buffer seems to block the one access, but it's just a guess. Will the access be through Joanne's Restaurant parking then?
No, sir. It would be through the front of the site as it is now, but it has, it would be north of the buffer to the south.
It'd be north of the buffer? I thought the natural buffer totally blocked your access.
It does, but I'm leaving space to get the drive in there if you can see that.
There's a drive in there somewhere.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll just remind the board members that site planning, right, and zoning is irrelevant in our decision-making process. We are making decisions based on consistency or inconsistency with the comprehensive plan, so just keep that in mind as we go forward here. But any more questions? All questions are good. Any more questions, comments, discussion items from the commissioners? Commissioner Linkus.
I'm just, I did observe that a couple of folks did mention that there, you know, there's currently agricultural uses all around actively there, and that is what, that's the future land use category says this is. So, and because we are not looking at the fact that this zoning and, you know, the use, although it may not be particularly intensive, this land use category could allow for more intensive uses. So that's going to be what colors my judgment here.
All right. Commissioner Lauk.
I, back-to-back applications where I agree with the applicant in terms of we need to take a look at what the long-term use is on the surrounding properties and be a little bit more comprehensive as we present what the nature of the area is. So to have an applicant get up, to have staff get up and say it's predominantly rural, and then have the applicant get up and say, look at the long-term land use of the area where we have heavy industrial across the street in this giant parcel. We have light industrial bordering to the north and to the south, where that's barely discussed in the staff presentation, doesn't give us a full and voluminous picture of the area. And so what I've seen tonight, in all candor, is the presentation is leaning towards the way staff wants us to move and what the recommendation is versus what the whole comprehensive picture is. I haven't made my mind up on how I'm gonna vote here, but we do have back-to-back applications where I don't feel like I got a comprehensive view of what the area looked like from the staff report. And just some feedback for staff.
All right, Commissioner Lauk, I did want to echo that, and it was glaring in the South County, the roadway project, when it was only the applicant's photo that Ms. Corcoran could show what was going on in Manatee County. I'm one who sits here at this day at every meeting, and if it's near the border of the county, I'm constantly having to tell you all, let me know what's going on across that line. Let me know what's going on across that line. And it's just constantly like a blind spot for staff, for whatever reason it is. But Commissioner Lauk is absolutely right. I know we can't take that into huge account, and we can't base our final recommendation on what's going on over there, but for us to be blind to what's going on in the regions directly adjacent to our county is not a good look. So I just wanted to echo that. Commissioner Linkus, and I'll get to you, Commissioner Cardenas.
Just respectfully, I do want to say that I think it was very clear on Mr. Hayes' slide that high-intensity industrial was presented across there, so that's what I saw on this slide.
Commissioner Cardenas.
Yeah, you know, I'm looking at this, and I'm looking at just what's going on in that area. I mean, Mosaic's right across the street. Nobody's gonna be putting houses up there anytime soon. We have a need for light industrial. We have a need for these truck drivers that park their trucks in different places and stuff like that. You know, it's funny because we see all of the different presenters that come before us and, you know, the different things that they present and the different things that they go about telling us about how, you know, you've got Amazon and all these other companies developing and, you know, our society's changing, and this light industrial is something that we definitely need so we don't have people parking trucks in, you know, in residential neighborhoods. So at first, I was kind of not sure about this one, but, I mean, with Mosaic right across the street, it's not like homes are gonna go around there anytime soon. It's all agricultural.
Good points, Commissioner Cardenas. Commissioner Jamison.
So from Plant City, being to the south, the logistics and what we have in that area, there's a major shortage of parking. In fact, FDOT is putting in a major truck parking lot at County Line Road and I-4 because of shortage of parking where people can park their trucks and stay overnight because they're very limited on access and what they can do, so.
Good points, big comments. Are there any other? Commissioner Lauk?
Just to respond to Commissioner Linkus, when I hear staff tell me that the long-term use and adopted future land use in the area is predominantly residential, and we see a picture of the LI right across the street and it's not mentioned from staff, then we have a problem telling us what is in the area. So to say that it's currently agricultural use and the surrounding parcels, and we don't mention the biggest parcel in the area is amiss. And so when I look at the pros for approving this and looking at it, we have FDOT moving to a four-lane road. We have a main freight and truck route. We have train tracks right in the area. We have heavy industrial right across the street. We have two light industrial proposed future, or adopted future land uses. And, I mean, the area isn't chock-full of industrials, the applicant would have us believe, but it is a growing trend in that area. And I'll defer to my fellow commissioner who has the Plant City area telling us that there's a need.
I just want to stand up for staff for just a moment because I also echoed that, but I will disagree with you here. Mr. Hayes definitively spoke about the property across the street. In fact, he mentioned the fact that, and pointed to, the roadway where the trucks leaving that industrial site come in and go out. So be careful now. What I was stating was that when we break county line, they don't show what's on the other side of the county line, but he definitively spoke about the fact that there is a large industrial site across the street, and that's the way he started his presentation. So, and you're right, they may have not spoke about other areas, but Mr. Hayes definitively spoke about the fact that there is a mine across the street. So I just want to clarify that. Are there any other? Yes, Commissioner Lauk?
This will be the last thing I say on it. When the applicant feels compelled to stand up and say, staff would have you believe that the area is predominantly agriculture in use, both in the adopted future land use and what's going on today, then the applicant is feeling staff present the area in a way that's not commensurate with what is happening in the area. He showed the map, he said it, and then he told us, if we can go back and look at it, that the adopted future land use in that area is predominantly agricultural.
Right. I didn't deny that, the other areas, but you said that he didn't mention the mine across the street. That's what you said.
My point is, if you listen to the staff report and read the staff report, it leaves you with the impression that the adopted future land use in the area today is predominantly rural, agricultural, not industrial. It is on the map that he showed. He did mention it. My point is, we didn't get a comprehensive view.
Agreed. All right. Commissioner Cardenas.
I kind of feel like if we're gonna get into this stuff about staff, we can do this at another time because it's not gonna be covered under sunshine.
Any conversation that you all have about this organization is covered by sunshine. So, yeah.
All right. Are there any other comments, questions, thoughts? Already past the public comment, does anybody have an objection to it? I'm not seeing any shakes. All right, we'll give you three minutes, sir. Identify yourself.
I'm Kyle Bowling. Own both the two properties to the north of this so-called site. Four-point-whatever acres is not enough room to have semis pulling in and out in that area. I worked for a trucking company for 20-plus years. There's not any trucking companies or owner operators that are wanting to pull into that type of an area to get in or out of, so that plan is not correct. This is rural area. I mean, we're, have families on front and back properties. I don't see the need for storage facility. There's a million of those all over the place, so that's just.
Thank you, sir. All right. Any, I'll give you a three-minute period to rebut because he did get some comment there, so.
Yes, sir. I would just say that the request that he's talking about for truck parking, if you're just focused on whether or not the LI use, we've already discussed that, but for truck parking, that's plenty of room to have a truck, RV, a boat for that. I'm the engine of record for the site. I think it'd be more than sufficient enough to have enough room to navigate on there. And I would also just reiterate, as the slide shows, I can back it up so that you can see, as mentioned, what is in the area as far as land use. And I just have it up there.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. All right. Are there any other comments, questions, thoughts from the commissioners? Everybody looks tired. All right. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comment on this one and open it up to motions from the commissioners on this item. Commissioner Kona.
Okay. I let the last one go because I don't really feel like fighting, but I'm not letting this one go. So I'm gonna make a motion to find HCCPA 2524 Comprehensive Plan Amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan based on Policy 4.8.1, Goal Seven, Objective 7.1, 7.1.2, 7.1.3, and 7.1.8. Second.
All right. That is a motion of consistency finding by Commissioner Kona citing 4.8.1, Goal Seven, 7.1, 7.1.2, and 7.1.8. And a second to that motion of consistency finding by Commissioner Kugler. Are there any questions, clarifications of this consistency motion needed from the commissioners before we take our vote? I'm gonna kick it over to a roll call on this one.
Paladin?
No.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Kona?
Yes.
Jamison?
Yes.
Kugler?
Yes.
Linkus?
No.
Lauk?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried six to two. Commissioners Paladin and Linkus voted no.
All righty. Thank you all for your time and the information. Move on to our next agenda item, 2I HCCPA 2525 Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment, North Highway 301 and Williams Road, and the presenter is Lilian Lenahan.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Lillian Lenahan, Planning Commission staff, here to present HCCPA 2525 located at North Highway 301 and Williams Road. This is a privately initiated map amendment that is small in scale and approximately 15.23 acres, and the applicant is requesting to change the future land use designation from Residential 4 to Light Industrial Plan. This is the general location map. It is in the urban service area and within the limits of the Tenote-Sassa community plan, and is located south of North Highway 301 and west of Williams Road. Here is an aerial of the site. The site is outlined in pink. The site is currently vacant, and there are some single-family residential uses to the east, south, and west of the site. North across Highway 301, there are some light and heavy commercial uses with mobile home parks. And to the northeast of the site, there's one light industrial use. So this is looking south towards the subject site from US Highway 301. This is looking east of the subject site along US Highway 301. The gas station is the corner parcel adjacent to the site. Looking west of the subject site from US Highway 301, and this is looking, if you were to have your back to the subject site, this is looking north across to US Highway 301. This is looking east of the subject site on Williams Road. This is if you were looking north on Williams Road, and the subject site is on the left side of the road. And this is looking south on Williams Road with the subject site on the right side of the road. This is looking north at the subject site from Ripley Road, which is further south down along Williams. This is looking west of the subject site from Ripley Road, and this is looking south from the subject site on Ripley Road. If your back was to the site, this is across Ripley Road. Currently, the future land use designation is Residential 4. The Residential 4 category allows for four dwelling units per gross acre and a maximum floor area ratio of 0.25. The Residential 4 designation allows for the consideration of agricultural, residential, neighborhood, commercial, office uses, and multipurpose projects. The site is surrounded by Residential 4 on the east and west, and there's suburban mixed use to the north of the site, and Residential 12 to the south. The applicant is proposing to amend the future land use category to Light Industrial Plan. The Light Industrial Plan category does not allow for the consideration of residential uses and allows a maximum floor area ratio of 0.75. This designation allows for the consideration of agricultural, light industrial uses such as processing, manufacturing, recycling, and storage of materials as the predominant uses, and includes support offices, warehousing, and retail uses. Under the existing conditions with the Residential 4 designation, the site can be considered for a maximum of 60 units or 165,854 square feet of non-residential uses. Under the proposed future land use designation of Light Industrial Plan, the site can be considered for a maximum of zero dwelling units or 497,564 square feet of non-residential. The proposed amendment would allow for the consideration of increased commercial and industrial intensity and eliminate the potential for residential development. The proposed amendment received no formal objections. However, it did receive some comments to note. The Environmental Protection Agency stated the proposed future land use change may have potential issues with noise, dust, odor, and other environmental factors that may affect existing residential communities in the surrounding area. Community and infrastructure planning staff prepared an initial traffic analysis based on the provided agency review summary and concluded that there is not adequate capacity to accommodate the additional trips generated by the proposed future land use change in the future scenario of 2050. And Affordable Housing Services commented that while the future land use change may add jobs to Hillsborough County's growing economy, any warehouse or facility that is constructed here would at minimum become an issue for the owners of the homes that lie adjacent to or would be immediately impacted by this industrial development and the activities that come with it. The proposed amendment is inconsistent with the following objectives and policies of the Comprehensive Plan. The proposed request is inconsistent with Flu's Policy 3.1.1, 3.1.2, and 3.1.3, which calls for compatibility and gradual transitions of density and intensity between uses. The proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendment to LIP is not compatible with this policy direction based upon the existing development pattern of the area, which includes predominantly single-family residential and mobile home parks with some light commercial, heavy commercial, and minimal light industrial uses. The request would eliminate all potential for residential development and allow a greater floor area ratio on the site directly adjacent to single-family and mobile home park uses to the south and east of the subject site. Even though the future land use category is site-plan controlled, the change will allow industrial uses adjacent to residential uses. Therefore, the change in future land use of this property from Residential 4 to Light Industrial Plan is not sensitive to the existing land use categories and residential uses that are adjacent to the site, and does not provide for a gradual transition of use in the area. Flu's Objective 3.2 and Policy 3.2.4 require community plans throughout the county to be consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. The subject site is located within the limits of the Tenote-Sassa community plan, and there's no goals or strategies in this community plan for the proposed request. And the proposal does not meet the intent of Flu's Objective 4.4 and Flu's Policy 4.4.1 and 4.4.3 that require new development to be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. In this case, the surrounding land use pattern is comprised mostly of single-family residential, mobile home parks, light and heavy commercial, and minimal light industrial uses. The request would eliminate all potential for residential development and allow greater FAR industrial uses on the site directly adjacent to single-family and mobile home park uses to the south and east of the subject site. Planning Commission staff recommends that the proposed map amendment be found inconsistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. And this concludes my presentation. I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Does the applicant have a presentation?
Yes.
Commissioners Jake Kramer. Good to see you again. We're in the homestretch tonight, so we'll try not, I'll try not to take all my time. So as staff said, we're just south of Highway 301. We're within the urban service area. And one of the themes I think you'll see in our presentation tonight is this area's really suffered from a lack of private investment. It really needs investment. It's an infill site. And this map, the nested map, helps show why that is. The light blue is the county's urban service area. The pinkish area is the Tampa service area. So as you can see, there was a utilities issue in this area in general for many years. But the reason why you've started to see some applications in this area is that it is starting to redevelop now that there's utility services. So we're in the Tenote-Sassa community plan. You can see we're on 301, which is an important corridor for this community plan, and we're on the, we're on the periphery. It's also really important to note that we're within a federally designated opportunity zone. You probably know these have become really important now with the big beautiful bill that's sort of been, breathed new life into that concept. And those opportunity zones are designated essentially distressed communities that the federal government is incentivizing through tax programs. And this is just to give you a bit of an idea of what we saw when we went out there to post signs. I mean, there are homeless encampments on vacant properties out in this area, including one of the properties that's in this plan amendment. It's also important to note we're on a designated truck route, like a couple, some of the applications you've heard earlier tonight. I mean, we invest in these roadways for a reason, right? We invest in them to bring jobs to the economy. They're really the lifeblood of these areas, and 301 is the lifeblood of the Tenote-Sassa community plan, I would argue. So our request is, we're requesting to go to LIP. And the reason we did that was, we'd had some conversation with staff. We did consider SMU 6, but ultimately what we determined was, SMU 6 sort of allows this potpourri of uses, and we wanted to give more certainty to the community, to the neighbors of what they would be getting. We didn't want to just come in and potentially have the massive amount of commercial next door to some of, some of the neighbors. And so LIP is a really unique category because what you have to look at is, is industrial potentially suitable? And I know we talk a lot about not being able to look at zoning, but in a way, LIP really pushes you to think about that. What you actually have to think about for LIP is, is it possible for industrial to go in this area if the site plan has the appropriate measures of protection and mitigation? And remember, your staff is going to see this when it comes back in that PD plan. That PD plan has been filed, and it's working its way through the process with the county So when you chart it out, you start to see sort of this weird mix of uses in the area. You've got SMU 6, you've got RES 12, you've got RES 4. You've got a bunch of different zonings surrounding this property. And these are just the properties that touch. And then you've got all these existing uses, right? You've got uses that, you know, whether they're heavy commercial uses or light industrial, I don't know, I mean, towing, truck repair, those sound like pretty intense uses to me when you compare it to something like what we're proposing, which is, you know, you guys have heard me say this, like, this isn't your grandfather's industrial. This is small bay warehouse, right? I would argue a warehouse is less impactful to a community than truck repair or carpet dryers or RV storage. And so in fairness to staff, like, when you look at the future land use map, it looks like this pretty sea of pink and yellow, and there's, you know, it's very uniform. All right, but when you actually go out there, it looks really different. All right, you've got medical office, you've got the truck repair right next door, you've got the RV park just to the north, you've got moving company, you've got a brand-new commerce center, the exact same use we're talking about. I could probably throw a baseball and hit it. And then the auto truck and repair, and then on, on the north, this is really important, on the north, two-thirds of this site, the board, the Board of County Commissioners, has already approved the use we're asking for. Now, that's in for a modification now to ask for more. So the board has already made the policy decision to flex SMU and allow this use on this site. So this, this is the use right next door that, I won't say staff says this, but the Comprehensive Plan says we have to be sensitive to. I mean, how could you be sensitive to a use like this, right? This is pretty messy. And again, I would argue that the best thing for the community would be some reinvestment in some, some sort of light industrial. All right, these are, this is, you know, you can see these uses are right next, next to some of these homes. And you can start to see this, this, again, this, this real, it's an area in transition, right? There, it started out with some neighborhoods, there's a lot of industrial filling in, there's a lot of really heavy commercial filling in as well. And so our planner is going to walk you through a few policies that we think support our view of this site. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. My name is Cynthia Sfidow. I'm with Barbara Kramer, and I have over 20 years' experience in planning on the public and private sector sides. So I'm just going to really go into, how do I get the, oh, there. So the staff report talks about Objective 3.1, Policy 3.1.2, and Policy 3.1.3. And these are really important because they're using this to justify an inconsistency determination. But if you actually read what the policies say, they say new development, they say at the time of site plan, you shall buffer. They're not saying at the time of comp plan amendment, you shall deny the use. It's saying when you go to do a new developer, a new development, you look at the surrounding character, and you use buffers, and you use landscaping to facilitate those transitions. Policy 3.1.3, they specifically called out, but they inadvertently missed the first sentence of that policy. And the first sentence says, "Any density increase shall be compatible with existing proposed or planned surrounding development." We're not proposing an increase in density, so that policy is not applicable. They talk about compatibility, but we agree, compatibility does apply. And that's when the site plan comes in, and you make sure that the few houses that are left, you buffer to them. You strategically place your stormwater ponds from them. You use a, you know, contextual design to make sure that you're addressing the potpourri of zoning and mix of uses surrounding the site. So this is, and I didn't want to talk about the zoning, but this is the example of the application of Policies 3.1.1 and 3.1.2. Buffering stormwater ponds, looking at what's next to you, and making sure that your site design incorporates those components. So, community planning, I was actually really surprised to see that staff said that it doesn't apply. I would argue the community plan does apply. The community plan is a very important process in reaching out to the surrounding neighbors and asking them, what is it that you want? So when you read the community plan, it talks about community control, empowering the residents and the property owners and business owners, and setting the direction of growth toward a community that adds value, enhances quality of life. Sense of community, the area is in distress, how do you improve the sense of community? You do that by redeveloping. Rural character, is RES 4 rural? You know, I guess you could make it rural, but I think most importantly, it's the balance. It's balancing the rural character with residential uses while protecting property owners' rights and values. And diversity of people, housing, and uses, it specifically encourages, you know, the diversity of housing and uses. So part of the LIP boundary includes a property that has already been rezoned. And in fairness to you all, right, that just goes to the zoning hearing master, that doesn't come before you. But the Board of County Commissioners has already made a compatibility determination. They've already made a consistency determination, and that is that this use can go on this site. And that's the current, that's the proposed PD plan. There, it's currently approved for 80,000 square feet of BPO mini warehouse, wholesale distribution, office, warehouse with retail, wholesale, display, accessory uses. So they are asking, they are in for a major mod to increase it slightly, but this, it's important to note that this LIP includes this PD as well as the acreage to the south. So the gold, the area in gold is, is the subject area that's subject to this LIP category request. So staff report on page four says, "If it were to be approved, it would eliminate the potential for residential density, allow greater commercial intensity, and introduce industrial uses." So it ignores that PDO 2 is already approved. So the request for LIP actually improves consistency with the comp plan by replacing the utilization of the flex boundary with the LIP flu, which mandates a planned development site plan. And with that, I'll switch it back, and I've got plenty of other policies to help you justify if you need to make a consistency determination. Thank you.
Thanks, Jake Kramer, again. I've just got one support letter we got from a neighbor who's adjacent to, or excuse me, across Williams Road to the east. We just got this today, so I'm going to put this in the record. And I just want to mention, we've, our client has spoken to many of the residents in this area. I think there's some supporters here tonight for this, and I think what you'll hear is similar to what's in the support letter, is that the residents know growth is coming into this area because it has utilities finally. And one of the concerns we heard is that, hey, there's RES 12 just to the south of this site, adjacent to this site. And the consistent concern we heard was, hey, we like this use much better than the multifamily that we may see one day if, if we don't work with, you know, someone. So with that, we're here for any questions. Our team is here, and we'd appreciate your support tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We had a couple people sign up for the public comment on this one. I will start with Lisa Menendez.
Hi, I'm Lisa Menendez. I've been in the Tenote-Sassa area for 30-plus years, and I support what they, they plan on doing. I think our community needs it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Ray Foster.
Thank you all for being patient and waiting here tonight. I've been in this neighborhood for 33 years, next to the properties, and my wife has been there since she was, since she was born. The field next to the house, next, next, that field has been an eyesore for years, and it's gone downhill for a number of years. Yeah, there's buildings around that are being brought up. The one picture that she showed of the trucks, that they showed of the trucks and all that, that place is, it's been a number of places already. Now they're just a bunch of trailers just parked over there. I don't even know what that is, and it's kind of catty-corner from my, from our backyards. The neighbors that I have talked to, everybody that I have talked to, we've all agreed because we, you know, when we got those.
The field next to the house, next, next, that field has been an eyesore for years, and it's gone downhill for a number of years. Yeah, there's buildings around that are being brought up. The one picture that she showed of the trucks, that they showed of the trucks and all that, that places, it's been a number of places already. Now they're just a bunch of trailers just parked over there. I don't even know what that is, and it's kind of catty corner from my, from our backyards. The neighbors that I have talked to, everybody that I have talked to, we've all agreed because we, you know, when we got the letter, hey, did you get the letter? Did you get the letter? Yes, we did. And we talked, and we all agreed that we'd rather see LIP going there other than other residentials. We have enough residentials in that area. And I would say with the LIPs and everything, I think it would benefit that neighborhood because you have a lot of people that are out of work, and if they can find a job close to home would be great. That's my opinion only. And as much, as many people we have coming down into Florida now, moving from other states, that also would help other businesses, you know, find jobs. I mean, we have apartment buildings that were just built on the other side of Fowler Avenue where the flea market used to be. I mean, there's, there's houses all over now, and I think it, I'm for it. Been there 33 years, and I couldn't think of anything else better, to tell you the truth. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next up, we have Matt Connors.
Good evening, everyone. I appreciate your time tonight, and try to keep this brief to get you home, but I'm the owner and applicant that has submitted this, and would just like to say it's been kind of a labor of love over a better part of the last year to really engage the neighborhood to kind of get this assemblage together, and it's a big testament that several were kind enough to stay this late tonight to voice their support of it. So with that, we have gone through, like Ray just alluded to, a lot of discussions, a lot of outreach, and probably more than anything, heard a lot of opposition towards denser multifamily or residential, which helped kind of inform some of the design and some of the plan in this LIP submission, which, again, I'll just reiterate that this is for, you know, small bay type warehouse, you know, more functional, where there's not gonna be tractor trailers going in and out like some heavy distribution center. But appreciate your time and consideration tonight.
Thank you. All right. Back to the applicant's representative for a three-minute period of response. Nope. All right. Over to the planning commissioners for questions, comments, discussions. Remind everybody that staff's finding was inconsistent. We could use some policies if we are gonna vote against staff, but there were plenty discussed, plenty available, even staff's own, apparently, so it's, it's out there if we need it. There any questions, comments, discussions from the commissioners? Not seeing any going on twice. Commissioner Lauk?
Sheesh, I did not want to go first. Regardless of how we move on this, I wonder what motions we can make in new business in the next time we meet, or maybe even tonight. It's clear to me, driving this area quite often, being in that part of the city, that Res 4 on Highway, US North Highway 301 is not the appropriate adopted future land use that we have in large swaths of that area between Fowler, Fletcher, all the way down. And if you drive that and you see the underinvestment that the applicant discussed, and you see the lack of housing, you don't, you don't see R1, you don't see Res 4, what you see is a hodgepodge of different things, but what you don't see almost anywhere on it is residential directly on US Highway 301. And if I think about a Dale Mayberry or any other major four-lane corridors that we have in the county, we don't have residential. We don't, barely have specs of Res 4 or Res 1 on those corridors. And I think this area is primed to be reevaluated and looked at. So regardless of how we move on this particular one tonight, I think this general area merits staff going back and taking a longer and harder, deeper look at it.
Good comments. I had the same discussion with Mrs. Ornita in our briefing, and let her know, Mr. Kramer made the comments himself. It looks like Candyland out there, like someone was just like, oh, we'll just, and I was like, MZ, this, I get that you all are focused on the maps and the colors, but you need to step back. I too am from that area. When I first moved down here, lived right down there off of, you know, Morris Bridge Road, learned how to water ski, kneeboard on Lake Tenona-Sassa, loved the area, have watched it turn into what it's turned into, and completely agree with everyone, and you, Commissioner Lauk, on that. So hopefully she knows, and hopefully we'll be having those looks of things going forward.
Yeah, well, and, and as I told Chair Joseph in his briefing, this area has not been an area that's been looked at in quite some time. If it was looked at, it would have last been looked at when the community plan was done, which was in the mid-2000s. And that, as was pointed out, was focused on the rural part of Tenona-Sassa. They did, I mean, the community plan in its entirety, strategies focuses on the rural area. It doesn't have strategies about this part of the community plan. So I don't think there were many land use changes that were looked at in this part. So my guess is that this is the land use pattern that was put in when the Comprehensive Plan was put in place in 1989. So it's, it really is probably due to be looked at. So what I, what I would offer is perhaps maybe I could come back at the next meeting with an idea about when staff might have a timeline to do that, because we do have a number of other projects on our plate. So if that, I could do that at the next meeting.
Yeah, that'd be awesome. And I know it's a longer-term look, just independent of what happens today, I think it's, it would be an appropriate area to take a deep dive in.
See, I told you, you got a smile, Commissioner Lauk. All right. Any other questions, comments, discussion items from the commissioners on this one? I will go on ahead and close public comment on this one, and open it up to motions from the commissioners on this one. And Commissioner Kona?
Okay. I don't want to be the guy that always switches the recommendations, but just to let staff know, I appreciate all of the work that you guys do. And for me, I come at these, these meetings very pro property owner, and you have to convince me otherwise, and this one is one that you really didn't. So I'm gonna make my motion to, to find HCCPA 2525 Comprehensive Plan Amendment consistent with the Comprehensive Plan Based on Objectives 3.1, 3.1, sorry, 3.1.2, 3.1.3, 3.2, and 3.2.4.
Second.
All right. We have a motion of consistency finding by Commissioner Kona citing Objective or Policy 3.1.2, 3.1.3, 3.2, and 2.2.4. 3.2.4, all right. And a second to that motion of consistency finding by Commissioner Lauk, was it? All right. There any questions, comments from the commissioners on this consistency motion? Not seeing any. I'm gonna kick it over for a roll call, though, just in case.
Bowden?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Kona?
Yes.
Jemison?
Yes.
Kugler?
Yes.
Linkus?
Yes.
Lauk?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried eight to zero.
All righty then. Thank you, everybody, for your time. It's been a long night. At 8:43, this meeting is adjourned. Good night.[1764.62]